Welcome to everybody tonight. We will start with our land acknowledgement. The Beaverton School Board would like to acknowledge that our school sits on the land of the Toalatn Kalapuiya people, and we recognize we are not the first teachers and learners of this land, and that there is still a native presence here today, including the nine Oregon tribes. Land acknowledgements continue to evolve, and we will continue to consult with our local tribal partners as we consider how to honor the original stewardship of this land. We will begin with the review of the agenda, board members. If anyone wants to propose making a change to the agenda or pull an item out of the agenda, this is the time to do so. Are there any changes to the agenda, or would anyone like to request? That anybody would like to request? Nope. Okay. If hearing none, the agenda then is approved for tonight. We'll start with some recognitions. So, Dr. Valdéras will start us off.
So, this is a board appreciation month, and I want to publicly thank the school board members for their work and dedication for supporting our kids here in the Beaverton School District. Callistically, this is a, this is, and I've been in a few school boards now, this is a, worked with a few school boards. This is the hardest working school board I have worked with because of your engagement. The board spends time visiting schools, visited school, visited school with justice today, for example, dialoguing with patrons and staff. And we have 40,000 kids, but our footprint in Beaverton's roughly 290,000. So, we're a big footprint. So, we have a lot of patrons and a lot of contacts lobbying for key district needs with our elected officials. And in fact, Sanita, right now, is, as she's visiting families, she's actually spent the day lobbying up in DC with, when she's visiting family, that's what she does for fun. She goes to the Hill and lobbies. So, thank you, Sanita, for that work. And a great deal of time reading and preparing for board packets and board meetings. I mean, you read your board packet, and you ask, and you ask questions throughout the week to prepare for that. Again, incredibly committed board. Really want to thank you for your commitment. I know you had some swag from your neighboring schools, region schools, but really want to publicly, again, thank this board for the work and commitment for the almost 40,000 kids we have here in the Beaverton School System. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll now look at, bring up Craig. We're going to talk about the EPA Clean School Bus Grant. Craig, would you please make your way to the presenter's table? Congratulations to Greg Beaver and the BSD Transportation Team. The Environmental Protection Agency has selected the Beaverton School District and our fleet of electrification project to receive $20 million grant from the 2023 Clean School Bus Grant Program. The grant will pay for the district to replace 50 of the district's 225 diesel-powered buses with zero emission electric school buses. BSD is one of school, one of the school districts, BSD is one of the school districts leading the country in the move to make its school bus fleet entirely powered by electric and renewable fuels as a way to decrease greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to climate change and other harmful pollutants. In 2021, BSD was the first school, school district in Oregon to acquire an electric school bus. Since then, the district has installed 31 charging stations and added electric buses yearly. This will be the biggest addition yet. Way to go to our transportation team. Craig, would you like to say a few words about BSD's move to clean buses?
Thank you, Dr. Perez, Dr. Valdéras, and board members. First of all, we want to thank, on behalf of the department, we want to thank the strong support that we received from the school board to begin with. We couldn't do any of this without your support. We currently have another grant for about $8 million that we are up for, for 25 more electric school buses from the EPA. But we couldn't have done any of this without you. So, I want to continue to thank you for your continued support from Dr. Mead and the operations team for helping us out as well and being strong supporters. We take this very seriously. We're very proud to take a lead, not only in the Pacific Northwest, but in the nation in the electrification of school buses. We look forward to deploying these buses. It'll bring us to 80 buses by this time next year, once we receive them all, and then it puts us in real good shape to, you know, for our ultimate goal of 100 buses eventually. So, we're very proud of it. We're looking forward to it. We're getting ready to enter into another fleet partner program with PGE to expand the number of chargers we have up to about 63 chargers so that we're well-prepared for that by the time the new buses arrive. So, we're actually getting four more, we're getting one, another one on Monday, and three more will be delivered within the next 45 days. So, we have them coming in all the time, and we're very proud of it, and we look forward to continuing our process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The board actually took a tour, a bus tour, to see the electric buses and actually got to see the work that our staff over in our transportation department was doing to upkeep. And it was exciting to also see the CTE students, how they are incorporating our students in CTE programs to come in and learn about electric buses and the maintaining, the buses and the internships or, you know, summer and during the school year work too. So, thanks for all that. Next, we will celebrate Young Arts National Competition winners. So, Sarah and Yungji, would you please make your way up to the presenter's table up here at the front of the room, please? Congratulations to Westview High School students Sarah and Beglin and Yungji Ryu, sorry, Beglin, Yungji, and Ryu, who were both named 2024 Young Arts National Competition winners. Sarah for musical theater, and then Yungji for script or playwriting. Young arts identifies exceptional young artists, amplifies their potential, and invests in their lifelong creative freedom. Award winners are selected through blind judging process conducted by an independent panel of highly accomplished artists in the field. Well done. Would you each like to say a few words about your work? And let's start with Sarah.
I-
And you can just pull up next to that microphone. You can bend it, it won't break.
Westview Theater really, really helped me find my love for theater, and I think of it as my home. And so, I just want to thank the district for supporting the programs that let us do what we love, and we're working on a show right now, and it's very, very exciting.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Yungji. I'm a senior at Westview High School. I've been reading and writing since I was really little and entering writing contests since middle school. So, it's really been an honor to be acknowledged by the Young Arts Organization, and I'm really grateful to my teachers and my friends for supporting my creative writing, and I'll continue to pursue writing in college and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you want to invite your family and friends that are here with you for a picture, that would be great. Thank you. We'll now move to our next agenda item, the superintendent's report from Dr. Valdéras.
And I'll be quick during my comments. I just really appreciate the school board for all their work and dedication. Do want to thank Craig Beaver and the entire staff, and really the vision of this board and previous boards in moving forward with electric buses. This is one of our efforts, as we have many regarding sustainability practices across our system. We're going to continue to do this. So, this is something that we look forward to continual work, not only in transportation services, nutrition services, the way we build. It's just something that we do as a system. So, we appreciate the work that Craig, that you've done. And again, I know it takes a collective. You have a great staff. We do have great staff everywhere. So, I just appreciate all that you've done under your leadership and Dr. Mead as well. Want to talk a little bit about weather and talk about that, the little storm we had, which was a, which was, we're still recovering from. So, that storm, we're still recovering from. But want to give a shout out to all the staff that actually did show up to work during the storm and all the effort to, to clean up the storm. It takes a ton of work. And I'll explain to people the way it works for, for weather days. Typically, about 3:00, 3:30, Craig Beaver and staff start riding around, driving around the district to make sure our, not just our streets, but our sidewalks are taken care of because, again, kids, we have a lot of kids that walk, so our sidewalks are safe. And we have, like I mentioned earlier, we have a big footprint of a school system, of a big footprint. So, about 3:30, at 4:30 or so, you know, Mr. Goldman in the back, our ESD superintendent, typically holds a superintendent call. So, we're on a call around 4:30 or so, and he hosts. So, he's up, as well as other superintendents, trying to figure out what we're all going to be doing based on weather conditions. And we have a lot of microclimates here. We have some systems that are a little bit better off on the west side compared to the east side. So, a lot of microclimates, and it's a tough decision. We don't, it's a decision to close schools that we don't take lightly because we know that we have a lot of folks that depend on our schools because they still have to go into work a lot of times. We have a lot of folks that are, that do have jobs that require them to still come in, and our school systems are de facto childcare on occasion. So, we understand, and it's, and it's something, but we need to make sure our staff are safe. And, but want to make sure that we recognize all the staff that did show up, and every day, weekends, we were going hard. I know it was a tough, a tough, tough road to hoe because we were working literally Saturdays and Sundays trying to make sure that, that pipes were taken care of, buildings were heated, we lost power, and we still have some, some concerns regarding trees in some of our buildings, arborists, but we got those blocked off. But just a huge effort by all the staff that did have to work during those days, and appreciate the patience of the patrons for all the decisions that were made because, again, they're not made in haste, as I mentioned earlier. They're very serious decisions that we make with a lot of information as best we can. But just kudos to all the classified staff and certified staff with their patience and effort. And Craig, thank you for, again, those morning drives, but also to all our facility staff. Carl, I know you're up and running around too. So, just, just want to say kudos to the excellent staff that really did the best they can to keep the schools up and running and minimize damage in our buildings, and we're still working through that. And, but I just hope that that's passed us for this year. But that was a really unusual storm because of the heavy saturation. That's why you saw a lot of trees fall. I've been in Portland most of my life, really, my adult life. I've never seen so many trees fall because of saturation, and it was in the wind, and it just, there's so many trees that we're still working through. So, appreciate the patience for everybody as we get through it. But we have our kiddos back in school, and let's knock on wood that no more snow and no more ice, and we keep, and we finish up the year strong. So, thank you, Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Dr. Valdéras. The next item on our agenda is public comments, and we'll start with the comments from our employee group. So, starting with OSEA and BEA, if you can please come up.
Hello, good evening. Hello, good evening, Superintendent Valdéras, members of the board. For the record, my name is Lindsay Ray. I'm a high school math teacher, currently serving as the president of the Beaverton Education Association. I'm not going to lie, Dr. Valdéras stole my thunder a little bit because I want to start by thanking the maintenance department in BSD. Several, several of our schools were impacted by the recent ice and windstorm, some in small ways and some in very big ways. I know that crews were in schools working to mitigate these impacts as quickly as possible in often very challenging situations, and we're all very grateful for that work. I also want to acknowledge the staff in those affected buildings. Their tireless efforts to maintain comfortable and engaging learning environments for students in the midst of damage from the storm has truly been remarkable. I know that later tonight, we will hear a report on the district's partnership with the Northwest Regional Educational Service District. I want to emphasize that the educators in the ESD are of vital support for some of our most vulnerable students here in Beaverton and across the northwest corner of Oregon. Our staff and students in Beaverton rely on numerous services from educators in the ESD each and every day. I just want to say that the union representing educators from Northwest Regional is currently in mediation for their bargain with district management. I hope you will join me in demanding that Northwest, the Northwest Regional Board comes to a swift and fair settlement with our educators. Speaking of bargaining, we're about to start bargaining here in Beaverton. BEA and BSD have our first session on February 15th from noon to 4:00 p.m. You can tune in on YouTube if you're looking for something fun to do that afternoon. We're very excited to start the important process of bargaining. Our working conditions, as outlined in our shared agreements in the collective bargaining agreement, reflect our students' learning conditions, and we are eager to find ways to improve our schools. I am confident that we will be able to find common understanding and shared goals as we negotiate. Finally, as we start a brand-new semester, I want to acknowledge that board members have been out visiting schools. Our staff so appreciates y'all taking the time to visit classrooms and walk through the hallways, to see our incredible dual-language educators in action, making students feel seen and heard, to see the tiny miracles that happen in our specialized programs as educators bend over backwards to get their students' needs met, to see our BH&amp;W teams in action as they de-escalate a student who might be dysregulated, or just to see a plain-old math lesson that may or may not be going according to plan, and just to really be at the center of everyday life in Beaverton schools. I hope that during those visits, you are engaging with educators and students alike and seeking to understand how we can continue to work together to make our schools better. Thanks, y'all.
And now we'll hear from Kirsty Sakman.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Perez, Dr. Gustavo, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Kirsty Sakman. I'm a pair-two roving educator when I'm not broken and the standing OSEA president-elect. I would like to say thank you, everyone. I'm not even going to go into the ice storm. I cannot follow anything that was already said, was already said. But we very much appreciate all of our dedicated staff who worked tirelessly to make sure that our schools were safe and continue to work to make sure that we can stay active and in a safe place of learning. There's just so many words, but it's already been covered, and we're very appreciative of all of our staff. Excuse me, sorry, trying to regulate. We, as OSEA, would really also like to put a big emphasis and a thank you to everyone involved in helping manage our staffing crisis that we continue to work through. We've done some really big changes in our hiring process, the change in the application process, the change in adaptations from so many staff here at the district office to how the procedure is done for interviewing, onboarding, training staff, as well as, we really went back and forth a lot about the idea of implementing temporary staff. And we, OSEA, really, really feel that it was a hard decision on both sides, and we feel that, and we respect the quality conversations and input, and we really, really genuinely appreciate the impact on how we are focusing and managing the temporary staff that we did need to utilize in our specialized programs, the push to need to support our staff and students and community to be safe, to follow plans, but also to be learning and engaging and feel safe in every version that it needs to be in a specialized program. And the idea of the management around is very, very specific, and we definitely appreciate and acknowledge the hard work it takes to manage temporary staff on top of all of the other things that we have to manage. And that's just a really, really big one. We, as OSEA, a lot of our members and us, we're worried, and we want to say thank you because you continue to show up and show us that we don't need to be worried because you guys are monitoring, which is big for us. We want to say a big shout out to transportation, amazing on the electric buses. Also, Craig wins my ride. I want to take a ride. I've got a lot of time, Craig. And to our members in BEA, we're standing solid with you in solidarity as you guys bargain. We're here with you. We'll keep up, keep notifying us. We're going to stand in whatever version of Blues Day or our Red for Ed that we're doing, we're here with you, and we appreciate all the support. We also get back from our BEA colleagues, and we're going to ask our BEA colleagues, along with everyone here at the school board, our big push right now in our union is to recognize our amazing, amazing library support staff. They're called Library and Media Assistance here in our district, which is crazy to me because they run entire libraries. They are the epicenter of learning. If you can't read, you're not learning. If you can't read to learn, you're not really fully engaging, and our library staff worked tirelessly to do so much on top of their regular job, to support all students, to modify books and curriculums and lessons, and then do duties and do bus duty, and to do every educator thing, put a Band-Aid on something, to help support something, to stay late, to give notes on an IEP. And they are underpaid, they are undersupervised, they are under-recognized. We all know everyone loves the library, they love that book fair, but do you realize how much work our classified do to put on that book fair? And they'll love to do it, and they'll continue to do it, but they deserve more. They deserve more accolades, more respect, and more time to do their job. And we stand behind them, we're position reviewing them, and we ask our community to please pay attention and shout out for them because we know everyone loves them, and they just need to hear it. Thank you very much.
It's now time to hear comments from our community. As a reminder, this is a time when members of the public can comment to the board, and the board will be actively listening but will not be responding or answering any questions. We appreciate you being here today. The board welcomes public comments, virtually or in person, from up to 10 people who sign up before the meeting. When more than 10 requests, 10 people request to speak, priority is given to students, district residents, speakers who have not already provided public comment during recent meetings, and the variety of topics. Comments can also be submitted in writing, and we've received six requests to provide public comments tonight. The six speakers will be Eric Vargas, Ginger Gamboa, Jen Hunt, Erin Osborne, Lisa Karen Donley, and Tammy Frye. Only the people I named are allowed to speak, and each speaker will have up to two minutes to share your thoughts. Your time cannot be shared or given to another person, and we have a timer on the screen. And when your two minutes are up, you must stop speaking and make way for the next person. Your microphone will be turned off if you go overtime. The school board does not hear complaints or charges against individuals. This means that we will end your testimony if you name a staff member, board member, or committee member by name in your testimony. Personal matters and complaints should be resolved by communicating directly- should be resolved by communicating directly with employee, their supervisor, or through the district complaint process found on our website. We ask everyone in attendance to model respectful behavior and remember that we have students as well as staff and community here in person and watching online. Our first speaker is Eric Vargas. Please come up to the front table and please take a seat in front of one of the microphones. And then Ginger Gamboa, you'll be the next speaker after Eric. So, be ready to come up forward or come up to the front row and be ready to speak af, go next. Eric, you can begin.
All right. Good evening, School Board of Directors and Superintendent Valderras. My name is Eric Vargas and I am a School Board Speaker and Representative of the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. As a School Board Member for this committee, it is my responsibility to stand before you today and provide a brief overview of all the work we are all collectively undertaking. The Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, for those who are unaware, is composed of 24 passionate representative students from all 12 BSD secondary schools. We collectively attend monthly meetings and collaborate with key district leaders include, including Todd Corsetti, Pat McCreary, Dr. Tatiana Savayos, Christiana Schultz, and of course, Dr. Gustavo Valderras. Together, we strive towards creating positive change and alleviating inequalities, not only within our individual schools but across the entire district. In my role as a School Board Speaker, I am entrusted with the responsibility of communicating and showcasing the diligent efforts of our committee to the directors of this board. As of now, our focus has been dedicated to three main goals. First, we have begun working towards supporting student success and fostering engagement both within and beyond our school environments. Second, we are recognizing the significance of these, second, we are addressing the absence of affinity groups within our schools, recognizing the significance of these inclusive communities. Finally, we are tackling socioeconomic disparities that impede academic and extracurricular opportunities for many of our fellow students within the Beaverton School District. I thank you for your attention and we look forward to collaborating further with all of you and communicating our progress as time passes. And on behalf of the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ginger Gamboa and they will be followed by Jen Hunt.
Good evening, Dr. Valderras and Beaverton School Board. Thank you for letting me share this evening. My name is Ginger Gamboa. I am a parent of a current BSD high schooler and a proud parent of a BSD graduate class of 2021. Just a side note real quick, thank you educators and parents who got our kids to the finish line during those, that 2020 and 2021 years. I'm much appreciated. I am an early childhood special education teacher with Northwest Regional. This is my ninth school year with the ESD. In my years with the ESD, I've partnered with the BSD pre-Ks, serving students in the pre-K program who have had individualized for family service plans or IFSPs. I love the pre-K program. I believe in inclusion when it is intentionally done, but that is a topic, a hot topic for another, for another day. I am also co-president of Northwest Education Association, representing the licensed staff. I live, work, play, and serve in Beaverton. This is my community. I love Beaverton. When I thought about what I wanted to share with you this evening, I thought I could share about how NWA has been in negotiations with ESD management for almost a whole year. February marks a year, February 7th, to be exact, and how NWA bargaining team has come to the table prepared with proposals only to be met with resistance and no collaborative solutions. In fact, when it comes to working conditions, which is our, one of our top priorities, every article in which we've proposed language to improve working conditions has been met with unorganized and confusing counter-proposals and continued resistance to discuss these, these chronic issues. Although there are many others, and I thought I had three minutes, I would really love to share a story about a student. And I'm looking at that clock and I'm not going to get to share the story about a student, but we partner. So, BSD is our biggest component and, and as Katie mentioned.
Thank you, Ginger.
Thank you.
Feel free to email or send that via mail to the board and we can read that.
Will do. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jen Hunt, followed by Erin Osborne. Go ahead. You can get started.
Distinguished board members, thank you for your service this month and every month. I'm Jen Hunt. I have two elementary boys in the district. Imagine that you've been hired as a personal chef for a family of 10 and you have been told that you start work at 4:00 where you need to plan and prepare a meal that is to be on the table at 5:30. You're not allowed to repeat any meal within the month. And of these 10 family members, two are gluten-free, three are vegetarian, two have dairy allergies, and one is halal and cannot eat certain things. And you need to serve a four-course meal every night. How long would you stay in this job? The same is happening with teachers throughout the country, and I know because I'm an elementary specialist. After 12 years as an elementary teacher, I transitioned into a career as an elementary math specialist. I worked in five states throughout the Northwest, Montana, Idaho, Washington, California, but mostly in Oregon. In the last eight years, I've worked with 36 school districts. I worked with 600 teachers a year. And what I have seen is shocking in how elementary has changed, certainly since we were in school, certainly since I started teaching. Class size matters in elementary, especially in these last five years. I've seen it across these 36 school districts. I can tell the change that has happened. And it's a big difference. Part of it is because something wonderful happened. We started naming things. We started naming trauma. We started naming autism. We started naming ADHD. We started naming these needs, various cultural aspects. We started naming languages. We started naming things. Unfortunately, the support did not rise commensurate with the amount of need. And that's a problem and it's why we're starting to lose teachers and it's why we are struggling. So, in your bargaining year, I implore you, if you would like equity, if you would like to keep, to retain, to hire excellent elementary teachers, if you would like learning to happen in the Beaverton District, I implore you to consider class size matters at the elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Erin Osborne and they'll be followed by Lisa Karen Donnelly.
Kind of short, sorry. Thank you to the school board for hearing us out. My name is Erin Osborne. I'm the Library Media Assistant at Nancy Riles Elementary. Recently, all LMAs have submitted an application for position to Human Resources in the hopes that we will be paid commensurately for the work we do. But I'd like to tell you a very specific story that illustrates how our support, how our work supports literacy. One of my students from kindergarten through second grade had told me repeatedly that she didn't like reading. This is not uncommon, especially coming off of the pandemic. Over the years, I had tried all the tricks that we know to get her interested in books. Sometimes she'd settle for a fancy-nancy book but would just kind of roll her eyes at me, just kind of like, uh. At one point toward the end of second grade, she said she just wasn't good at reading and then it clicked. It wasn't that she didn't like reading. It was that she didn't have the confidence in her reading skills. Coincidentally, I had all of these audiobooks on CD that I wasn't sure what to do with. I decided to purchase some personal CD players so that we could have an audiobook listening station. During her library time, my student sampled one of those audiobooks, one that comes with the book. While a student reads along, the CD is narrating the book and then it dings to tell you to turn the page. I think it was Frog and Toad. Anyways, I'm not exaggerating when I say her face lit up and what she said next is the stuff of educators' dreams. She said, "I can read this. I love to read." It turns out she just needed a little space and a little time. And that's just one of the many ways LMA supports student literacy. We provide a relaxing, low-pressure creative environment for students. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Karen Donnelly and will be, and will be followed by Tammy Frye.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lisa Karen Donnelly and I am the Library Media Assistant at Fergrove Elementary. It is often said that libraries are a heart of a school. That can be true. However, it doesn't happen automatically. In reality, our school libraries are being cared for and are students introduced to their riches by us, the Library Media Assistants, the Classified Library Media Assistants. I began my library work as an assistant to a certified teacher librarian. She taught students and I assisted her circulating books and with the unseen production work. All that changed after the budget crisis in 2012 when we assistants were left alone with libraries to manage and classrooms full of students in our care. The expectation was that we assistants would simply carry on. Imposter Syndrome was not a feeling but a reality. In the ensuing years, I struggled to give students a semblance of what they had had before while waiting for the return of our teacher librarian specialists. That never happened. Now, I alone engage up to 30 students at a time. I share literature and inspire them to learn more about the world through Read Alouds. Literacy comes not only from classroom instruction but from curiosity and most importantly, desire. I help students find these in the library. I alone make sure that students can find and check out engaging material, reading material to take home and fill sometimes empty or nonexistent bookshelves. Today, I am proud of the success I have worked hard to achieve. I believe I have earned the respect of my students, staff, and my community. However, sadly, I do not feel respected by my employer, Beaverton School District. My job title is misleading and my contribution to the education of our students is vastly undervalued. I am no longer in a...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our final speaker will be Tammy Frye.
Thank you to the board for the work that you do throughout the year and thank you to those who've shown up for our LMAs tonight. When my four children were students in Beaverton School District, each of our elementaries had a library staff consisting of a certified professional librarian who was responsible for classroom management, instruction, interlibrary loans, and collection development, as well as a certified library media assistant who supported the librarian and students by circulating, shelving, repairing, processing, and inventorying books, a full-time job. As you know, the district removed certified librarians from our schools the same year they removed certified tech teachers from our elementaries. But whereas each certified tech teacher was replaced by a classified employee, no one replaced the certified librarian. Classified assistants maintained all of their duties while also taking on the responsibilities of the certified librarian. Imagine asking your local public librarian to maintain service levels while also teaching up to 30 classes a week. Although the details of our work vary from building to building and depend on our special schedule, all of our classified staff interact with each student in our building and independently supervise entire classes while also maintaining a robust and current library collection that supports literacy, equity, social-emotional learning, and choice reading, the key to developing lifelong learners and students who love reading. Yet, we are paid less than staff who never supervise whole classes, that never present content to whole classes, and who are never expected to create sub-plans when they are ill. Those of us still in this position do it because we love it. My colleagues are among the most dedicated and passionate educators I have ever known. We are not asking for modified duties. We know what it takes to do this job well. We're asking that we be justly compensated for the often invisible work we do that makes the work of other teachers more effective.
Thank you, Tammy. We have one more, one more comment from somebody online. I believe their name is Rafi Kodorowski. If you'd like to, go ahead. You can start.
Good evening, Beaverton School District School Board. My name is Rafi and I'm a freshman at Mountain Set High School. Not too long ago, the district decided to push school start times forward. This is a very big and important decision as it can severely impact the schedules and routines of many across the district. My favorite club at school, DECA, will be losing its advisor due to the later school start time and might not be able to continue on. I have friends and peers who next school year won't be able to make it to their job anymore after school or be able to be driven to school in the morning because there will be no longer anybody to drive them. There is less time for clubs, sports, and extracurricular activities and many students will have less time to focus on their studies in the evening because of that. It is very difficult for the board to make the right decision for its vast number of students and staff across the district by themselves. While you all try your absolute best to make the district the best it can possibly be, it is often difficult to pick the right choice out of the perspective of those being chosen for. That is why I am proposing that the board send out a simple Google Form poll to all students, grade 8 through 11, to be filled out in advisory, and also for the same form to be sent out through email to families and staff across the district to collect opinions and data on the topic. With data and opinions from students, parents, and staff across the district, the board can make sure that they are making the best possible decisions and creating a better working environment for everyone. The board is a very difficult job. It is a very challenging task to make such large decisions for such a wide variety of people. Pushing the school's start time forward has many pros and cons that are unforeseen by the board and Dr. Valderras and would be of the best interest of the school district to consult students, families, and staff on what they think before making such a change. Such form would only consist of a simple yes-or-no poll and an optional slot for those wanting to share specific comments and opinions. I'd be more than happy to help create and organize the poll if necessary. I hope that in the future, the board could implement a polling system like this for important decisions to work with students, families, and staff to build a better school district together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now move into items for information. Our first topic is, is a report by our Behavioral Health and Wellness, Wellness, presented today by Deputy Superintendent Heather Cordy, Executive Administrator for K-8 Schools, Dr. Patrick Miggsy, teacher on special assignment, Sarah Doig. I'm getting the names all wrong today. And teachers of special assignment, Jenna Toma. So, I will hand over today to you. Please repeat your name so that I can say them correctly or introduce yourself.
Thank you, Superintendent Valderras, Board Chair Perez, members of the board. Tonight, my team and I have the opportunity to share with you the really great work that is happening within our Behavioral Health and Wellness program. I am joined this evening by Patrick Miggs and Sarah Doig and Jenna Toma. And I'm really trying hard to resist the temptation to teach you at this point, Patrick. Okay. Sarah and Jenna are two of the TOSSes, our teachers on special assignment, in our Teaching and Learning Department and specifically on our BH&amp;W team. And we are so thankful. They are with us every day doing the amazing work and just serving as such strong leaders in the work, in the work that they're doing. So, before I hand it over to my colleagues, I would like to first just provide a little bit of, of history for some context. Last spring, the departments of the district office experienced budget reductions and at that same time, we did some restructuring in the Teaching and Learning Department in order to create even more crossover and synergy between and among our teams and ultimately in support of our schools. So, BH&amp;W is one of the many teams and programs that's within the very large Teaching and Learning Department. Part of that restructuring consisted of the executive administrator roles. And so, just as a reminder, those are the administrators on our team who support schools by supervising and coming alongside principals and assisting in, in so many ways on a day-to-day basis. And we have five of those executive administrators. We have four that are K-8 execs and one high school exec. And so, part of that restructuring was making some adjustments to those job descriptions and responsibilities. So, each of those executive administrators not only have a large number of schools that they support and principals that they directly work with, but they also now have a content area that is a part of, of the work that they do. That, that restructuring... That, that restructuring was designed to help build that, that crossover and those, the conversations and the close work between the work that happens in curriculum, instruction, and assessment with our executive administrators. Patrick Miggs, one of our K-8 execs who's here this evening, he now oversees the BH&amp;W team and the program and all of the elements with, within that program and that important work. As we go into our program update tonight, it, it is really important to reiterate that there has been such great work done in the past within this program to provide supports for our students. And the team now is just really building on that great work. And with the equity lens at the forefront, they're working to really align and reframe what those supports look like in our schools. The last note that I'd like to share with you is that later in February at your board retreat, one of the topics that will be, that will feel very much like a work session, I think, is going to be a conversation with you about student behavior and discipline data. And as we enter into this conversation this evening on this program update, it's, it's really important to note that a key and pivotal part of the supports in place for students prior to the point where there ever is a discipline-related issue is the work of Behavioral Health and Wellness teams and staff members and that program. So in that work session next month that we will have, we won't explicitly be incorporating BH&amp;W into that conversation because of the focus that we're giving it this evening, but really wanted to just plant that seed so that as you're thinking about this work and thinking, and then about the conversation next month, it'll be a likely connection for you. And so with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Miggs.
Thank you, Dr. Cordy. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're here to share with you a update on the Behavioral Health and Wellness work that is happening across the school district. Behavior, Behavioral Health and Wellness, or BH&amp;W, is a broad term we're using to talk about social-emotional work happening in classrooms, the multidisciplinary teams functioning in each of our school to support students, and a framework of resources we're implementing along with the people we've invested in to support reducing barriers so that all students have access to learning, to help each student feel that they belong and all students to be successful in their learning and feel connected to their school communities. I want to start tonight by grounding the BH&amp;W program within the district's strategic plan. While the district has been engaged in supporting students' social-emotional well-being for years, the pandemic and the implementation of a strategic plan has brought that work into greater focus. As Heather said, great work has been done over the past couple of years and we continue to build upon that work. As a district, we're focused on the promise of belong, believe, and achieve. And the work of BH&amp;W is centered on each child truly being able to say that they belong, that they matter, that they're challenged and successful in their learning, and that they feel connected to that learning, to their peers, and to adults in the building. This is a work that we need to continue to focus on and feel a sense of urgency around. The strategic plan has laid out a vision to guide and frame this work, and the BH&amp;W program is a key part to fulfilling that mission and vision. Each school this year has developed a school improvement plan, and within that plan is a safe and thriving goal which principals have worked to develop with their staffs. For children to be able to say that they belong and they matter, their social, emotional, and academic needs must be attended to in purposeful and intentional ways. We believe that more children, the more that children have these needs attended to and met, the more connected to school and their learning they'll feel. While this has long been central to our work, a key aspect of our BH&amp;W program this year is to support greater alignment and to foster systems of support for all children across all schools. The strategic plan has helped to create clarity, which is supporting this collective vision, and we're working to build that bridge between social-emotional well-being and academic success. One too many. Thank you. The other framework that's guiding our work is the Oregon State Social and Emotional Learning Standards. These were newly adopted by the state last summer. And as we continue to refine and reframe our BH&amp;W program, these standards will help to guide our work. They're not drastically different from what we've previously centered our work upon. However, some will notice that there's an addition of identity, agency, belonging, collaborative problem solving, and curiosity, which is only going to strengthen our collective work. These standards guide us in both instruction and practice, and it's a great tool to help ensure alignment across the district. Now that I've shared sort of a context for our Behavioral Health and Wellness work, we wanted to share this quote from the Collaborative for Academic and Social and Emotional Learning, known as CASL. This is an organization that has guided ours and many school districts' works for a very long time. This quote speaks to our why and how social-emotional learning ties back to our strategic plan. When we do this well, we know that children will feel that they belong, that they matter, and that they're believed in. I also wanted to take a moment and share this framework, which is focused on prevention and problem solving for all students using data-based decision-making. This multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS framework, uses evidence based on assessment, instruction, intervention, and acceleration practices to ensure that every student receives the appropriate level of support based on their own level of need. As we refine and align our practices, this MTSS model is an important backdrop to our work. Central to our focus this year is strengthening Tier One practices. Tier One practices are at the core of our work. These are the practices, experiences, and supports that every child receives over the course of a day, a month, or a year. We know that when Tier One practices are strong and consistent, there's less need for Tier Two and Tier Three supports. Later, Jenna will be talking about the social, uh, social and emotional curriculum materials that fall into the Tier One category. Consistency in our Tier One is an area where we need to strengthen and grow our practices. It's a big part of our focus this year. We also know that some, there are some kids who need a different, uh, something different in order to help engage them in productive and meaningful ways. This is ongoing work. We'll continue as we determine and implement Tier Two interventions. By viewing our BH&amp;W program from both the lens of social and emotional and academics, we know that the stronger the supports for children will be. So I've given you a context and a backdrop for our BH&amp;W program. And as Heather mentioned, good work has really been done over the years, and we know there's good work left to do. Sarah and Jenna are deeply engaged in our work of aligning practices this year. They're out in schools, they're working alongside staff, and doing a needs assessment of how BH&amp;W program is a part of each school's practices. And I'll turn it over to Sarah to share.
I'd like to take a moment to differentiate between district-level Behavioral Health and Wellness program and building-level Behavioral Health and Wellness teams and staff members. The Behavioral Health and Wellness program is our district's systems of support that identifying, uh, which grew from identifying the need and behaviors that were coming in the classroom, which the pandemic then exacerbated. The BH&amp;W system helps nurture the resiliency of our students, staff, and organization by promoting the well-being and building community. This system includes but is not limited to those positions in the building that are specialized, who work with the, within the Behavioral Health and Wellness framework, such as nurses, school psychs, school social workers, school counselors. I could go on. It also includes the Tier One SEL, that Mr. Dr. Miggs was just speaking of. And it includes our multidisciplinary team, which is also what's referred to as a BH&amp;W team. Each building has staff who spends the majority of time during their day supporting the social and emotional needs of students and staff. These staff members are a major part of our Behavioral Health and Wellness team, and some of the positions are listed on the screen as we speak. The makeup of the teams are determined by the school, their level, their need, and their size. Other members depend on the building, but could include campus monitors, grad mentors, instructional assistants, classroom teachers, SROs, campus monitors. Again, this list could go on and on. It really depends on the needs of the building and the needs of the student at the time. These teams look at a myriad of barriers that can impact student success and help identify resources in the community, such as referrals to mental health, providing for basic needs of families, and parent support when they have needs or concerns about their student's behavior in their home. It also helps connect to those wonderful resources already in our building. The aforementioned grad mentors, we can connect a student who is struggling with an individual mentor. We have groups happening in our buildings that provide for the social-emotional support of our students. Students are referred to this Behavioral Health and Wellness team at the building level by teachers and other school staff. And they also can be elevated from other student-based, student-focused, pardon me, student-focused meetings. Behavioral Health and Wellness members discuss the whole child and who is best suited to support that student, provide the interventions. And they also help connect, I apologize. Students will continue to be monitored once they've come up in front of the team while those interventions are processing. And they all take place until they can be determined that no further supports are needed. As Patrick said, Jenna and I have been out into the buildings, and we have been lucky enough to be in about half of our buildings so far. We have just seen amazing work, collaboration. It occurs at all levels. We have been so far in every single level, and we will get into every single building. We have been witness to this work, and during these visits, we're listening to the teams, hearing about their process, hearing about their struggles, their needs. And we are identifying opportunities for solidifying this work and helping unify it throughout the district. Students who transfer from Vos to Springville or matriculate from Conestoga to Mountainside should have the trust that the supports will be uniform, no matter what building they walk into in our district.
So as Sarah shared- Can you hear me okay? As Sarah shared, the multidisciplinary teams that she spoke of are one aspect of the Behavioral Health and Wellness program. Another vital component are our SEL curriculums. So both curriculums are evidence-based and they were adopted in 2022. Kindness in the Classroom is our elementary social-emotional learning curriculum. It was designed to help schools create a culture of kindness by teaching six core concepts. That's respect, caring, inclusiveness, integrity, responsibility, and courage. Character Strong is our secondary curriculum. It teaches social-emotional learning skills along with character skills side by side. And the desired outcomes there are well-being, belonging, and engagement. All students have access to these curriculums as a Tier One support with the goal of teaching students the social-emotional skills that they need to thrive and creating a school culture that empowers the whole child. These curricular materials are highly rated by CASL, whose SEL framework is very closely tied to the new state standards. We're in year two of implementation, and we understand that proper and sustainable implementation will take two to four years. Part of our realignment process is that we're looking to strengthen our Tier One with continued professional development. And we're also looking forward to how we can meet the needs of students with a Tier Two curriculum adoption. So we have our multidisciplinary teams, we have our social-emotional learning curriculum, and then we have a myriad here of additional responsibilities that our Behavioral Health and Wellness program supports. ADDIE'S Act is a set of suicide prevention lessons that are presented at the secondary level. Aaron's Law are our sexual abuse prevention lessons delivered at both the elementary and the secondary levels. Tragedy Response is a team of individuals to assist schools in regaining the stability in a wake of a crisis. We have Student Threat Assessment Team that investigates and assesses students who engage in behaviors applying aggression, aggression, or violence at others. We have our Sexual Incident Response Protocol, which is address implied sexual threats or sexual acts. There's a lot of acronyms here. So STAT and SERP are both protocols that are led by our Behavioral Health and Wellness staff, and that can lead to cross-collaboration with community partners as needed. We also support assist training, which is applied suicide intervention skills training, and restraint and seclusion, which is our safety care training. I also have to mention that our support specialists, our students' support specialists, and our student success coaches assist with the implementation of that curriculum and are really in buildings day-to-day supporting students' needs. I will turn it back over to Patrick for where we go from here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Sarah and Jenna. So the question is, is where do we go next? We made an investment in people and resources that have been important and needed. And while we know we have work to do, we're excited about the work ahead. As we've shared tonight, we're working on realigning the BH&amp;W program so that there's more consistency of practices and support within each school. Part of this work will be creating a strong data collection system to help us have a clear picture of the impact of this work on students. Implementation of a universal screener within our MTSS work, looking at the data schools are collecting related to their safe and thriving goals and our academic outcomes will be strong indicators of the effectiveness of our practices. We know there's more need for professional development, excuse me, as we solidify our Tier One practices and our overall Behavioral Health and Wellness teams. This will be central to our work this spring. We're also starting an adoption process this spring for curriculum related to Tier Two practices and interventions. And finally, we'll continue to partner with Josh Fritz and the entire Teaching and Learning team to the work of implementing MTSS and universal screeners, both of which will support the BH&amp;W program beautifully. Again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your care around this important aspect of our district's work and for your support of the BH&amp;W program and the people who carry it out each day. We'll now open it up for questions. Thank you.
So we'll open it up for questions. I see Susan.
First of all, thank you. I know this is very hard work. It's very emotional work.
Can you pull your microphone a little closer? Please. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you all for being here. I know it's hard. So my question is, in terms of the makeup of the team, I want to understand, I know you're TOSSAs, but I wanted to understand what your positions were, teachers, social workers? Just kind of understand how this is all coming together.
Just to clarify, you want to know what our background is?
Yeah.
Okay. I am a school social worker by trade, and I just transitioned into the TOSA position earlier this year.
Yeah. Thank you, because that's a big piece of this that would be really, just in terms of clarifying what is making up this team? I think it's really important to understand where you're all coming from.
Yeah. I am a teacher on special assignment, but I am a classroom teacher at heart. I am both an elementary and a specialized program teacher by trade. I also spent three years as a special ed facilitator, so I bring that classroom perspective in both special ed and general education to the role.
So I really understand how important curriculum is in supporting our students, but I also really understand that our students are all in crisis right now. And so, or a lot of our students, not all of our students. And so, and I know there's Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, and that addresses the crisis. But to, I guess I want to hear and understand what does that, those mean in a more meaningful way? Because my concern is about those students that tend to get lost in the system, and they maybe don't speak up or, you know, their behavior is misinterpreted and it's not, you know, they don't consider it a mental health issue. So I'm, I mean, I'm seeing, I love this. I love that we're doing it, but I just want to make sure that as we're doing this work, that all those pieces are looked at, because obviously it's very important.
Yeah, I, Susan, I appreciate that. I think that is the power of having the multidisciplinary teams and having a wide variety of people who are bringing a wide variety of perspectives to the work. And there are the teams where referrals come to, but there's also people from, uh, social workers, counselors, who are in classrooms, who are working alongside teachers, who are meeting with teams just for that fact. And I think that when I talk about the, the need for us to really realign and relook at our practices, a lot of this work, which was done beautifully, was born throughout the pandemic, and so much of it was reactive. We're now moving to that place of how do we be proactive? How do we use the systems that we have in place to proactively meet the needs of kids so that we are looking at each kid, and things like universal screeners will help us with that.
I appreciate that. So the other, I have two other comments and questions. So the other question I have is, you know, we're going to hear a report about connection of incidents where students have been involved with some kind of police action. And what I'm not seeing is, I didn't see in that- I'm not seeing is, I didn't see in that report, is the tie with mental health and how we're supporting those students with their mental health needs. So I'm hoping at some point we can address that, because, you know, I don't assume all behavior is because of mental health issues, but a lot of behaviors are. So I hope we're looking in those terms, whether it's, you know, police action or not police action, they're interrelated. And so I just want to, you know, ensure myself that those are, I know they're being looked at, but I want to hear about how they're being looked at.
And I, just for a clarification on that, the, tonight's report is from the police department, because the ask was on the MOU and just what they're doing. Our part of what we do, I think, is going to come at a later time. So that's not, that's my understanding. I don't know if that's, if you want to say anything about that.
Yes, we can address that a little bit later, but we can address that now as well.
Well, I mean, I think it all ties together, and I think, you know, so when I'm reading that report, and I know it came from Beaverton, there needs to be some kind of connection there, and it doesn't have to be denied, I'm not asking for that tonight. It just, those are questions I have, because, okay, we're seeing the one side, but we're not seeing the other side, and I think that those are so important to see together.
And the people in the building are really working very hard to attend to the mental health needs, and I think as Sarah talked about, we also partner very closely with Washington County. And in conversations, whether it's around kids who are having some sort of discipline issue but also mental health issues, we are connected to Washington County in bringing services in and partnerships that we have, and that can be from a substance abuse lens, it can be from a mental health lens.
I just appreciate hearing that.
Absolutely.
And then the, I'm going to end, because I know people are going, okay, Susan, enough. There are other curriculums out there that I know about, like Mental Health First Aid, that I know helps support students that, you know, to, students and teachers and adults to help those students that might have suicidal ideation, and I'm wondering if that's being utilized in our district.
So as we move into, the board adopted last spring Tier One interventions, which is where Character Strong and Kindness in the Classroom came from. We will be starting that adoption process for Tier Two interventions this spring and moving into next year, and we'll bring materials to the board in a year for that consideration.
Thanks. And we'll go around and try to go get everybody to have like a question, and then we'll come back again. So we'll go to Tammy and then Ugana, and then come back around.
Thank you. And Susan, I'm thinking along the same lines, can you step me through what it would look like if a student reported a sexual assault?
Absolutely. So that, that report would go to building administrator. They would then conduct an investigation that would include conversation with the family, with the student, with anybody who may be involved in that. That would then determine whether that needed to go to a Level Two, and that would be based on the severity. That would then come to a Level Two team, which meets every week. That includes building administrators, it includes mental health people like social workers, counselors. It will include Washington County's, people from Washington County from different aspects of Washington County, whether that's DHS, juvenile, the sort. And then from there, then safety plans, monitoring plans are discussed, and support comes from that, from that level.
And I assume that this was all for the person that was the, that was.
No, I appreciate that. We, in those STAT conversations that we have at the Level Two, we are talking about both the person who has caused the harm as well as victims as well.
Okay. And it doesn't sound like the first thing you do is call the Beaverton Police Department.
It varies, depends on what the situation is.
Okay, good. So it isn't just an automatic?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Ugana?
Thank you so much for your presentation. And I'm also thinking in line with Susan and Tammy. I'm interested in knowing, I, it's not a, I don't need an answer right now, I just, I'm also curious to know how the behavioral health and wellness team plays with the YSO program. I want to know the interrelation there. I'm interested in knowing that as well. So my question is, I've seen all the team members listed in the presentation, the counselors, social workers, and all that. Does every building have each of these team members in one building? Or do you have social workers here or counselors in another building? Or I want to know if each and every one of these team members listed here are all in all the buildings.
Yes, they are. There is, not every building, say, has a full-time person of that role, but those roles are all represented in each of our buildings.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sunita?
Thank you.
Sunita, you go ahead if you're ready.
For the information that you all have provided. My question is that when a kid, Medicaid now helps students to get, or if they have mental health problems, to get one-on-one help for kids who cannot afford. Does, does BSD give that information to students if, if we are not being able to provide that help to the student in the school? Are we providing some information to parents and students so that they can get that help?
Yes, absolutely. And that comes through social workers, for counselors in their partnerships with outside agencies, and that can happen whether that substance use specialists do that, work with that. Our social workers are very key in that, in connecting families to outside resources, because we want to be sure we know what, how far we can go, and we know that there's, sometimes there's needs beyond that.
Is there, is there a change in the ruling? Because I was talking to the senator today, and he said that there is more help being provided for in Medicaid. Is there something changed in the, in the services that is being provided with Medicaid for kids?
That, I would not know the answer to that. We'd have to find that out.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm glad at least the social workers are connecting them, so that's good. Thanks.
One of my wonderings, I just appreciate seeing the MTSS system, the triangle, and that you also have, it's, MTSS is not just behavior, but it's behavior and academics, and you showed that at the bottom of the triangle, so that's helpful, I think, for us as board members to see that it's a combination of both. And I also, as we were, you were talking about on one of the second to last slides about what you are, how you're aligning the practices, I think that that will be really helpful, even for my personal understanding. It is part of our strategic plan, so that's exciting to see that we have this work, knowing that our funds are limited and all those different pieces that we're looking at, thinking about in the alignment, like, I heard you say there's going to be some, some data, and just kind of to see what are those critical pieces of our teams, and thinking about, from our perspective on the financial part, like, how are we going to fund these different pieces of this moving forward? As we have funds from ESTER that are being used, or we have, you know, general funds, this is really important work, and I think the more we can align our systems, the better. And I appreciate the work that's being done, not only with the adoption of the curriculum at Tier One, sounds like we're moving into Tier Two and looking at what materials and curriculum we need for that, and then also the trainings for our staff that are even on those teams. I think that continued training is important, but thank you for the work. So is there any, any other comments or questions?
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is a report regarding, oops, did I miss one? I think it's Mike. Our next monthly financial report presented by Mike Schofield.
Thank you, Chair Perez. Members of the board, good to see you again after the holiday break. Good to be back in front of you to talk finances for the school district. As you may recall, in December, I think we had a, not a, not a very glamorous financial report update, because our meetings were so close together last time. Now it's been a while. We've got some updated information for you. You have the, all of the usual suspected reports in your board packet. You'll see investments are certainly a big piece of what's going on right now. It's because we've received most of our property tax collections. That's kind of behind us, so we invest those dollars as we spend them out over the rest of the year. So a lot of investment activity going on. To draw your attention to the general fund forecast, we do have, we've gone through that kind of a whole recalibration of the system again. We did that right after the first of the year. You'll see we've got an update in the, on the revenue side, primarily on the revenue side, where we've got some increases in the state school fund based on some new numbers we received from ODE. High Cost Disability Fund, that's a fund where, that we apply for each year, us and every other school district that has students that qualify. We think we'll get some more resources in that area as well. Property taxes are up a little, local option levies up a little, and our ESD supports based on the $10.2 billion is up. Remember, we get resources from the ESD, we get some cash that they send to us, pass it on to us, and we also use service credits to purchase things, and we also use direct billing, where they actually, we ask them to just bill us, and we pay for those services. So it's kind of a three-tiered approach in terms of how we fund those programs in our schools, but that's up as well. Expenditures are up a little bit, not a lot overall. Again, what we're seeing there is the added supports that we discussed back in November. Those are starting to trickle into the system, and we're seeing those costs go up. That's kind of where we are in the general fund. I can take questions about that. I've also got some comments about what you have to look forward to.
Open it up for the board, and we'll go around and then come back. I think we're, thank you for the detailed report. We've read it, and I think all the different times we've met and you explaining it to us is really helpful in building our understanding. It looks like we don't have any questions from the board right now.
So just what you have to look forward to, Budget Listing and Learning video is done. So we are busy dealing with translation work around that, and also some prioritization exercise questions that we ask each year. That will be out hopefully later this week. We'll send that out to our schools and ask them to share with staff and public community and students. So that, that's coming in the next, hopefully by the end of the week, maybe into next week. We have that. Also, state revenue forecast next Wednesday already. Here we go again, another quarterly update. We'll be paying attention to that. Forecast is usually around 8:30, 9-ish on, on that Wednesday morning, so I'll have it up on a screen somewhere, listening and watching the slides, and we'll look forward to seeing how the state's doing from a revenue standpoint. So at that, look forward to budgets in full swing, Budget, Budget 101 coming up in March. Looking forward to a nice, robust budget season.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is a report regarding the data from the youth service program. It's particularly, we'll receive a report from the Beaverton Police Department, and we'll have Dr. Carl Mead introduce our guests. And welcome to Carrie Skinner.
Good evening, Superintendent Balderez, Chair Dr. Perez, and school board members. Thank you for having us on the agenda this evening. Over the past three decades, our collaboration with law enforcement agencies has exemplified a dedication to ensuring the safety and well-being of our students and staff. Our YSOs have not only been instrumental in maintaining the security of our schools, but have also actively engaged with our communities, building trust and fostering positive relationships that extend far beyond the confines of our campuses. Data on interactions with YSOs underscores a multifaceted impact they have on our educational landscape. While traditional metrics such as crime prevention and response remain essential benchmarks of their effectiveness, we must also acknowledge a broader spectrum of their contributions. From mentorship programs to proactive outreach initiatives, YSOs have played a pivotal role in promoting inclusivity, empathy, conflict resolution skills among our student body. Moreover, it's essential to recognize the evolution of the YSO role in response to the ever-changing dynamics in our society. As we confront complex issues such as mental health, substance abuse, and social inequities, the responsibilities entrusted to our YSOs have expanded beyond mere enforcement to encompass a more holistic approach to student support and intervention. Their training now encompasses elements of de-escalation techniques, cultural competency, and trauma-informed practices, reflecting a nuanced understanding of the diverse needs present within our school communities. While we acknowledge the valid concerns surrounding the presence of law enforcement in educational settings, we remain steadfast in our belief that responsible and community-oriented policing can serve as a catalyst for positive change. By fostering transparent communication channels and soliciting feedback from all stakeholders, we can ensure that the presence of YSOs remains aligned with our overarching mission of promoting safety, inclusivity, and academic excellence. I thank you for your attention and dedication to this critical matter. It's a pleasure for me to introduce to you, as I don't believe Carrie has been introduced formally to the board, Carrie Skinner is our administrator for public safety. She's joining us this evening, not as a representative of the Beaverton Police Department, she is a district employee. So she will be here to assist in any answers to questions that you may have at the end, but primarily our focus is on the data that is being presented by the Beaverton Police Department this evening. And we're fortunate enough, we have three members of the Beaverton Police Department, deputy, I'm sorry, Chief Stacy Jepson. We also have Deputy Chief Alan Jewels and Captain Ed Mastropelito. So we'll pass the baton to Ed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for having us. I'm Ed Mastropelito, captain at Beaverton Police. I oversee the Services Division, which houses our youth services program, and I'm also a BSD parent for the last 14 years with two to go. I've got two sons at Mountainside right now, one graduating in May, heading to hopefully Oregon State, sorry, Doug Fens, and one's a sophomore. So thanks for all you guys do. What we wanted to do tonight is kind of go through what we're presenting on the dashboard and kind of give a little bit of background of what that information entails, how we comprise it, what we're trying to represent with the information we're providing. So let's see if this works. In 2023, we signed an IGA between the city of Beaverton and the school district, and under Section 3211, it identifies the components that both the district and the city have agreed to try to capture on a quarterly basis. When we do this, we're looking at the school year as kind of the beginning of the quarter, so September, January, or September, October, November, December has our one quarter, and then go from there. So the data I'm going to show you tonight is for that first quarter, September through December of 2023. First, I wanted to kind of explain what a call for service is, because we're focusing on our first bit of information, our calls for service. And a call for service is anytime an officer is either, we receive a call from dispatch or an officer self-initiates activity at the school. So if we respond to a parking complaint, that's call for service. If we respond to a theft, that would be a call for service. If an officer is doing community engagement or is at a sporting event, that would be a call for service. So I just wanted to kind of throw some of these out there so that as you're looking at the data, you kind of know what we're pulling from. These are just, I thought we'd go over some types of calls, so alarms, animal complaints, assaults. This isn't a complete list, and I think everyone has this dashboard, so please refer to this as you look at the data. Like I said, this isn't every call that we would go to, but in doing this for a little bit, this compromises most of the calls in and around the school communities. Maybe it's kind of page two of that. Some information we try to capture is a police report. So every time we go to the school while being a call for service, does not necessarily constitute a police report. We may be there for a parking complaint, and that would not be a police report. We may be there on a consultation, that would not be a police report. So a police report is only done if there's information regarding a crime, if there's information we need to gather and send over to the district attorney's office. It could be a traffic crash that may occur in or around a parking lot. So when you look at the data, you're going to see calls for service are higher than police reports, and this kind of explains kind of why we're doing that. Another piece of data is arrest. So we do list out the arrests we've done in and around the schools. There are two types of arrests when we're looking at the youth services program. The vast majority are reports where the victim and/or the victim's family wants to press charges, and we refer the report out to the Washington County District Attorney's Office. Now, the Washington County District Attorney's Office has a juvenile division, which houses a group of attorneys who specialize in the youth services programs. What that means is we write a report, we flag it as an arrest, because we have probable cause that a crime was committed, and we refer that out to county. Then they take over. They continue to work with restorative justice practices, many times are in communication with the victim and the suspect. But from that standpoint, the police department, unless there is a follow-up component to the investigation, we're pretty much done with that. So that goes to the DA's office, and they're actually working on innovative ways to kind of a peer court model, and they're discussing other options, kind of a full-team approach. We'll have us, and then they'll be out there, they'll also have probation out there, so we kind of look at kind of a holistic approach to how they handle things. And then the second component would be a warrant. So a warrant or a detainer is generally, if you have a student, at least related to schools, who is currently under the supervision of Washington schools, who is currently under the supervision of Washington County Juvenile. And as you see, based on this slide, we have had instances this year where the juvenile department has issued a detainer for a student and has instructed an officer to go pick that student up at school. That is a must-arrest situation, so we don't have the ability to say, well, we won't do that, we'll do that later. Nor sometimes do we have the ability to understand why the probation officer may want us to respond to the school versus the house, because there may be a home-life situation, maybe safer for the kids, we may be taking them into protective custody. So there's different nuances to it, but I just wanted to kind of really brush over what an arrest was. So as you see that, kind of keep that in mind. So now we get into the data. I apologize for the size of this slide, but there's a lot of information on here. This list calls for service by school and call type. And I believe it's eleven hundred or fifteen hundred?
Sorry, where are you?
Right here.
I can't see.
I know, it's very tiny.
Eleven seventy-five.
So eleven hundred and seventy-five calls for service that were conducted by our youth service officers at a school. So what I pull out of here when we run their data is if they respond to a theft at a grocery store, that's not in here. This is strictly calls at the schools and by call type. So kind of just starting at the high level on that call for service. We want to then break that down into police reports, and our next slide, it's on the dashboard, is by school, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's by school, by race, so as we identify, and then what I do there is try to compare one-for-one, is we go to the B S D website and identify based on the report card what the demographics of the school are. So that kind of goes right next to us. So you see, we start with ACMA, and you see the reports we've taken by school, and then the demographics of that school. You will see on our side an area that says unidentified. What that is, is generally if we take a report of a criminal mischief, so if someone writes graffiti on one of the outbuildings of Sexton Mountain, we don't have suspect information. On our report, it would be listed as unidentified. That's why we have that, and it's not on your side. We do take reports at some other schools in the district, not Beaverton School District, but from Beaverton, and in those cases where it's not readily available, I have that listed, there's no information on that piece. We then take it to police reports taken by school and how we got there. So who initiated the report? Is it a parent? Is it a student? Is it DHS, another law enforcement agency, school staff, the juvenile department? So how did we get there? Something drew us to the school to do an investigation, to write a police report. So I thought it was important to try to capture what's bringing us there. And again, we do that by school, and then the one for DHS, I kind of broadly keep that in mind. When I put DHS up on there, those are going to be either child abuse or sex abuse investigations, but I classify them as DHS because many times they come in through DHS. They do come in in other places, it could be from a parent or a school administrator reporting abuse for a child, but in an attempt to capture it in one category, that's what DHS identifies as. So just keep that in mind when you see why is DHS calling us. They're vastly either sex abuse or child abuse cases. The next one is, we wanted to try to identify that same information by school and by gender, so female, male, other, and then again, the unidentified are those cases where we don't have a suspect and we're unable to make a determination as to the gender, race, or sex of the perpetrator. There's a situation we're also trying to capture, so we have calls for service and we have reports. We do have other instances where an officer will respond to a school, and the reason we're at the school is because it has to do with one of the students. It may not generate a police report, but we are there because something about, something's occurred about a student. So I wanted to refer, and I'm sure you guys have all seen this, this is from the B S D website, this is when to contact your youth service officer. So the greens are easy, those are your thefts, those are your assaults, those are your, identified in the student code of conduct, as this occurs, you will contact a police officer. This next bit of information is kind of that yellow area. There are consultations, there are situations where we may go to the school because a child was found with edibles and we went and picked up the edibles. But we recall that because we don't engage in the child because of that, but that's why we went to the school. We may get a consultation because some kids were pushing and shoving, and was this an assault, was this not an assault? So we're kind of educating staff on our, the legal interpretation of what harassment is or what constituted crime. So that's what this next bit of information is. So you'll see calls for service has a number, police reports has a number, and then we're capturing the kind of mainly this yellow component. So again, just like with the police reports, we're capturing it in the same format. So we have it by school, by race, and then correspondingly, the demographics of the school, so we can kind of see a one-for-one. We then take that same information and we break it down by the race and the source. So how did we get, what brought us again back to the school for this population? And we have DHS, other agency, parents, staff, and students, and this one we just do by the identified race of the child. And then we also break it down by the gender, male, female. Again, the unknowns, keeping in mind, and the unidentified's are no suspect information. So we're out there, and it may be about a student, but we don't know who did it. Somebody stole my iPhone. Okay, we take, we may not take a report, we may take a report, but we don't know. So that's the, when you see unidentified, that's because we, as the officers, have no idea, and it's listed in the police report as unidentified. And that's our dashboard, is reporting it today. Again, this one went live, we put it out. We put out a first couple in September and October, just to kind of get a feel for, let's folks see what we're going to start producing, and then the quarterly started in December and went out this month.
So we'll open it up for questions, and I see Susan and Tammy. And we'll, let's do that kind of round robin, where you ask one question, and then we'll come around, see if somebody has a second or...
I only have one question. Thank you very much for coming today. I appreciate it very much, and I appreciate what you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. So my question is, but I don't think you're going to have an answer to this, you never know, because we're just starting statistics, I'm just wondering, are we having less calls from principals or more, I mean, from schools or?
I think the district's done a great job, and I'm just speaking personally. That red, yellow, green has been very helpful, tying the calls for service, or at least the police notification to the student code of conduct, I think was, I don't know who came up with that, but it was an amazing idea. Because if there's a violation of the code of conduct, then the status first is to go to the code, and then the code then simplifies. The greens and the reds are great. It's the yellows we're having the conversation, and it's a wonderful opportunity to kind of educate on, you know, what's a crime? Is it okay to have a consultation? Many of those calls, we may not even respond to the school, it may just be a phone call with the administrator, so it doesn't necessarily mean we're in the office interrogating our kids, it's just a phone call. And each call's different, and we welcome those conversations, and it's been very productive, I think.
Thank you. Tammy, and then Sunita.
Do you want to go first, Ugana? Hi, thanks for being here tonight. If, if, if an administrator calls you for a school fight, what is it, what does your response look like?
The first conversation generally does occur after the event.
Okay.
And the first conversation to be what happened.
Okay. So you don't, you're not in there like actually breaking them up?
No. I mean, if they're at, if they're at the school and it occurs in front of the officer, sure. I mean, it's no different than I would do if I was at Albertson's. But barring a riot at a school, if it's two middle schoolers getting into it at the tetherball court?
Yeah.
No. In fact, many, many, many times, depending on the age of the children involved, the culpability of the children involved, like worst, it's not a police call, it's not a crime, it's not a harassment, it's not a mutual, it's, the way we handle children, the way the youth service officers handle calls for service involving our kids is night and day from the way our officers handle calls for service on the patrol side with adults. You've got age, you've got culpability, you've got intent, and all that goes into play. And we've even gone so far, myself, when I was the Y S O sergeant, talking to the victim parents to kind of explain these nuances, because it's very easy as a parent to go, oh, protect my kid, press charges. But, you know, we go down the restorative path, we go down the bigger picture and treat one, each one differently, so.
Would you, and again, I know this is different, would you file a incident? What do you?
We may not do anything. It may on that, on that second, that final component where we're called for, we're called because of it relates to a student, many, many times, there's no report written on that, because there's nothing for us. Now, that's, on the school side, they can document discipline according to B S D policy. We're not taking reports on anything that doesn't require a report to be taken.
So you would defer to B H and W if they're in there already sort of like
Yes.
Doing that restorative work, then you guys just step back.
And many, many times, it's just truly explaining that under or in law, the crime of harassment has these components to it that just don't apply. And I guarantee, I know we've been getting better, but those calls are diminishing, but we still welcome it. It's a good conversation, because staff changes and...
Yeah, and then you said you wouldn't respond to a call at a, at a grocery store, but from the September report on your dashboard, there is a call to a Fred Meyer.
Fred Meyer.
Yeah.
So that was our first, so that was my first attempt at this data.
Oh, okay.
And after the I G A, and we actually had officers, we had a Y S O respond to Fred Meyer because two B S T students were arrested for shop, they were stopped for shoplifting by laws prevention. In my first attempt, the last thing I wanted to do was start pulling out data that pertain to the kids.
Sure.
For integrity purposes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then raised some questions, and then I said, well, let me just sort this by address, and I eliminated anything that didn't occur at a B S D school. Because they also respond to homes. I mean, we'll, my Y S Os will go to someone's, if DHS over the weekend or over the Christmas break or spring break, we get the three oh seven report, which means we have a DHS call about abuse, we'll go to the house. That may not be in here, because when I sort it, the school doesn't, we don't list the school yet, we're trying to figure out how to get this, where we can identify the school of the individual involved, even if we don't go to the school.
Right, so.
But we're not there yet.
Working out the kinks, the S R Os responded.
Working out the kinks, they responded to students, students stopped by laws prevention.
But now we're like, we probably shouldn't report that as an S R O duty.
Well, from my side, yes, from, I guess from the observable side, maybe not. Because the S R O did respond, we dealt with the kids, we referred it out to our juvenile, the kids weren't fully, I mean, it was dealt with, restored, I mean, it was done, we spent a lot of time with the kids, we talked to the parents. That's the nice thing about the program, is they have the time to spend with the system. It's a kind of a beginning to end, you know? Spent many, many years on patrol, you go, you write the report, you refer it out, and see you later.
Later.
Right? The Y S Os responded, because patrol initially went, and then the Y S Os took over, talked to the parents, kind of talked to Fred Meyer, smoothed things over, but we went, and that's why I reported on it. I didn't do that sense, because it raised a lot of questions. So.
Sunita, and then Justice, and then Ugana. Sunita, Ugana, and Justice. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, but I'll ask one, because we're doing one at a time. In your, in your call list, there were some schools, well, thank you first of all, thanks for the work that you guys do, and I appreciate the fact that that red, yellow, green is working out really good, and so my question is that call list has some schools that are not B S D schools?
Correct.
Why, why is that? Are they, are we providing the support for them? Because we are paying for this now, right? So.
Well, B S D is paying for some of the Y S O, oh, sure, good.
Thank you for the question, Sunita. So the Beaverton School District is not paying for any services outside of our, our school district. So Beaverton Police encompasses the city of Beaverton, and there's a number of private schools, so Jesuit, Valley Catholic, say, I mean, any number of private schools are within the jurisdiction. This is a community report, it is not a report specific just to Beaverton schools.
Okay. That's, thanks for that clarification, that helps. Yeah, thank you.
Ugana, Justice, and then Melissa? No, no. Okay, Ugana then Justice.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to ask my first question. So when you respond to a call, and if it's, if you get to have a bit more information about the situation, and if it involves students with known mental health issues, do you respond, I don't know if this is a question for you or for the B H S, sorry, mental health or social, emotional learning team, but do you respond in the presence of some type of mental health supporter, maybe a counselor, social worker, if the students involved have known mental health issues?
Many, many times, there are counselors in the office when we arrive. The only times we're really going to respond to a call like involving a student with some behavioral health issues is we've responded to kids on the spectrum that may leave campus, so it's a safety situation for them. If a student makes statements that wanting to hurt themselves on campus, we'll respond in that situation. The school's got psychologists, I mean, all of our officers are, they've taken neurodiversion training, they've taken crisis intervention training, so they've, they've got tools in their toolbox, but they're not a psychologist. So we generally don't respond if a kid is dysregulated and acting out, unless there's a safety situation. One recently, we headed at a school where the kid left campus, or he was actually hiding in the school, but they thought he left campus. So we swarmed the area, because he was a middle schooler in tenth grade, I think, but that's, that's when you'll see us, and a lot of those B H I ones that are listed there are strictly those. Sure.
Okay, Justice, and then Melissa, and then back to Susan, and then Tammy.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you for this update. Just for some clarity, I have a background prior to, spent most of the last ten years of my life working with the families involved with the criminal justice system, particularly some of those cases that would end up being juvenil referred, and there may have been serious incidents, whether they were on campus or off campus, or involving students or not involving students. So I have like a lot of questions, but I'm, so I'm not going to answer, I even need more time to sit with this to figure out which questions are relevant. But I guess the question or something that I would, I would hope we could surface in this space is, can you share a little bit more about that process, like for the officer? Because I think there's sometimes the idea that like, the officer is going to be this ongoing part of a case in a way af, after the initial reporting, and what the interaction is actually with the officer, the juvenile department, and then possibly other services that might be involved once the youth, when there actually is a report.
There's a situation where we referred it out to the juvenile department?
Yeah, like something is referred, just to give a sense, because I think it's important, it's a concern for me as a, just in many ways, that if we ask officers, think officers are doing things that were not what officers do, and then it can put an officer in a bad place, because they're like, well, why didn't the officer do this, or why didn't they do that? And they can also put our systems in a bad place, meaning we are not doing all the administrative things that we need to do, and we're not also surfacing all the partners that are actually involved when a kid gets involved in a criminal act, because I think that is, it's a really complicated system, and most folks don't know. So I just wanted to take this opportunity.
No, you're right, and not to, I mean, not to oversimplify, if we take a report of a stolen iPhone, and we refer that out to juvenile, we're done. Like, there's nothing. If it's a more complex case, or if we're dealing with an assault, and the district attorney wants us to re-interview a victim or re-interview witnesses, we may wind up doing a follow-up call during that. So they're case-specific, and they're at the request of the juvenile department. But those are, the follow-up interviews are going to be the DHS calls, the abuse calls, because the best place to interview the victims may be away from home. So you'll see us doing follow-ups there. Those are, those are the cases where we would do a re-contact.
Thank you, and I'll have other questions.
So I'm just going to go in that same order, so back to Melissa, then Susan, Tammy, Sunita, Ugana, in case, if you want to pass, that's fine too. So Melissa?
Thank you for the report and for coming this evening. My question is, I feel like we have a lot of questions about the logistics, because we're so curious about how your, the role of the Y S O plays in our schools, and just that request of, I'm curious if adding time with Y S Os or to our school tours, because we get to do school tours, to be able to add kind of, not inaction, because I don't need to see like inaction, but just more of a conversation about the logistics in that space, about what that looks like? Is that something that we could?
We could definitely arrange that. We'd welcome that.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And even more so. I would say, I would welcome conversations if, you know, Justice has fifteen thousand questions, let's schedule some time. We want to be able to answer those questions and be able to meet one-on-one, if that's necessary, with our partners in this. Happy to have you do a ride-along with a Y S O. If you want to spend a day with a Y S O to see kind of the scope of their work, their job, kind of the schools in which they touch, you're welcome to do that.
Okay.
So absolutely.
And you do it at your schools, or if you want to like switch it around, so you don't kind of have it like anonymity, if you want, whatever, we're fine.
Thank you.
We're on TV every, every month.
You can go undercover.
You can go undercover.
Oh, my. We're kind of easy to spot nowadays. But thank you, I know Carrie had mentioned something like that as coming in to welcome people into, so that you can learn more about the actual work there, too. Susan, then Tammy, then Sunita.
This time, I'm gonna welcome Carrie to the district. So, I don't know, this one may be kind of random, but I'm asking it because there's been a lot of high concern about hate crimes, and I don't know if there's any reported, because I didn't see it like classified here, and what would escalate it to someone being arrested, like an assault, or?
Well, I mean, Oregon has, we have our bias crimes, we just haven't seen any at the districts. At least nothing's come, I haven't seen any, I review most of the reports, I haven't seen any incidences where it was a bias-based event, so we're just not seeing that, thankfully.
We have our reporting system, and so there are, we have the number of reports that have come in, and then we've supported, but that's on our side, our reporting system.
I would also add to that, Susan, that we have Safe Organ, which is accessible to all students, as well as, I mean, any member of our community to make any reports, and those can be done anonymously. And those are all routed to our school administrators.
Okay, thank. So I have a question that I'm gonna sneak in about like apparel, because I thought I saw something when I was reading the report, that there's been a little bit of change to, like maybe the shoes or something?
Oh, the clothing.
Yeah, the clothing.
So we've evolved a little bit.
I was looking at your shoes, and I'm like, those were not the shoes.
Well, I was gonna wear my mountainside shoes, but I wanted to stay neutral, but I do have mountainside chucks, so I, I do have those. But, oh yeah, we, so we, we went with a gray shirt at the end of last year, beginning of this year, and the students and faculty completely hated it. The officers were ridiculed and run out of town. We then quickly pivoted to a blue shirt to kind of mirror what our bike team was wearing, and the students hated that even more. They were called the Smurfs. This, it was just kind of comical, so we just kind of wanted it to look different, just kind of something. So, conversation back at work, and what if we just had matching shoes, just for kicks? And I was down at the employee store, and I saw these mountainside colored sneakers, and I sent a picture over to one of our officers, and they're like, oh, this is great. And the next thing you know, we were able to get shoes that matched all of the home high schools. So we've got South Ridge, Mountainside, Go Mavs, by the way, Beaverton, and Sunset. Yeah, and the kids love it, I mean, the kids are wearing them now, faculty's wearing them now, and it's just kind of a thing, and, you know, we're having fun with it.
Thank you, Tammy, and then Sunita.
I appreciated earlier that you said this isn't outside world policing, this is child, you know, student policing, I don't know what the term you used, but I want to understand a little bit about how, what an interrogation would look like, and would you ever interrogate a student without a parent present? I think that, you know, students probably don't know they have a right to not talk to you. And, you know, they might even have a teacher, a supportive teacher, go talk to officer-friendly. And so I just, that power dynamic is worrisome, and do we, is, can you assure us that you don't interrogate a child without a parent present, or just, I'd like to learn a little bit more about that.
Yeah, so, having done this 16 years, like, we've never interrogated a child. I'm not like in interrogation, I look at like TV at the table, and we're sitting there, like, that doesn't happen. We may question the child without a parent there, if the crime is related to child abuse or sex abuse inside the home. We may be there on a mere consultation and can resolve the situation with just kind of like, hey, man, blah, blah, blah. So we do have conversations. The district has their policies on contacting parents, so we work with district staff, and parents are contacted to some extent of this, it may or may not be. When I was working with the YSOs, there were many times I had conversations with the kids with the parents present. There were many times I had conversations with parents first, and then the kids. I'd have conversations with kids, then refer back with mom and dad, and then there were times where staff had already contacted the parents. So there's nuance, but it's never, I would never envision the term interrogation to be used, but well, no, just.
Yeah, that's fair, maybe not a fair question, but that's reassuring what you just said, is that it sounds like you wouldn't question a kid without the parent at least being involved, either talking to the parent beforehand, or, you know, the parent is supporting their kid talking, talking to you guys. So is that sort of how it plays out, or do you, would you ever, you know, whatever word you use, question a kid, or just pull him to the side and?
Well, we may, I mean, if, if, if I say Carrie stole my, my thing.
You might go talk to him.
I may go, man, did you just give it back? Like, that's technically questioning, but I'm not, I'm not like building a homicide case over.
I understand.
A thing, so, I mean, we will, from time to time, it's all, it's all, with the 1,100 calls for service, every one of them's different. So, and every report was different, so I, I don't, without getting into each report to go, well, that one we did, and here's why, we may. But they're all handled very tactfully, knowing that the kids in the school and the parents are eventually notified at some point, and the bigger conversation.
And so there isn't a form of policy about, you know, we can talk to a 12-year-old, or, you know, it just, I, I'm wanting to build in as many protections for our kids as possible, and so I'm just wanting to understand the circumstances under which a kid could confess to a crime, and not have known that he didn't have to speak to the police officer.
Well, I mean, obviously for criminal, if it's a criminal case, sure, you know, there's obviously Miranda, there's, there's laws in place, and the officers follow. Many, when I was doing it, there was always a faculty member present during the conversation, either principal, vice principal, it could be the student's counselor, someone that they trusted, felt comfortable with. So, I mean, we're very conscious, because vast, all these cases, most of these cases, the students return to the school, we don't want to embarrass them or put them in an awkward situation.
Oh, I understand you have.
I'm wondering if this would be a good question to maybe have our policy explained at some point, maybe if not today since the police, or if you, if it's quick, you can explain it today, if not, next time.
So do we have a policy about?
It's part of our conduct, I think.
We have a board policy for cooperation with law enforcement agencies, and I believe it comes from OSBA. And so cooperation with law enforcement generally means that we would have law enforcement engaged with a student at a school at whatever request is made, based on whatever crime is or not a crime. And as an incident that may have appeared at a school, law enforcement's involved and actively at the school, parents would be notified. In a most recent incident, I went to the school, I notified all the parents, said, hey, here's the situation, want to make sure you're aware, we've got the building administrator here. Building administrators have a legal responsibility called locoparentis, which allows them to act in the parent's stead if the parent is unavailable. And so that is an option that a parent may choose, but with, you know, the one thing that came out of COVID in 2020 is the Zoom technology and the FaceTime technology, Teams technology, and so we do have a lot of parents that may choose to virtually remote into the interview and stop the questioning, or say, hey, I'm not comfortable with this, I'm gonna invoke my legal rights for my child. And law enforcement would stop and disengage. So we do have a board policy, and we can get that to you.
Sunita, and then Ugana, and we're close to the 30 minutes, but I want to make sure everybody gets at least their second question in, so Sunita, Ugana, Justice, and Melissa. You can pass if you don't need to.
Yeah, I have a quick question. You know, there are certain students that feel intimidated, or is there, are there activities that are done so that, you know, there is a better relationship between the police officers and the students, and do you, can, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we're planning a really fun summer camp program this summer. I've got one YSO who regularly goes to a bunch of the middle schools and reads to kids. We call it Joey Reads.
That's great.
I've got another YSO who has been participating as a wrestling and baseball coach for Southridge High School. He played minor league ball, and he's kind of been helping the pitching team, in fact, he put together a big pitching offseason program. So we've got that. I've got Ryan Potter, who is down at Mountainside, he's a youth coach, so he's been working with some kids over at Highland, and he's working on a flag football program this summer. So they're constantly engaging.
Yeah, is there anything that you would suggest that would make the relationships better, that we could do more of with the school administration? Is there anything that you can think of?
I think right now, things are going great, I mean, the officers generally come during lunch, it's, it's opportunities to engage when we're not being called there for an event. So we're not being called there because something happened, because more too often officers respond when bad things occur. And we're trying to change that, so we're coming out when bad things haven't occurred. We're going to lunches at the high schools. Like I said, we're doing reading programs at the elementary and middle schools, we're kind of teaching some classes. We put together, our last two years, one of our YSOs, we took an opportunity with Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and did an entire marketing campaign around teen dating violence. We had youth in the community design posters with a small contest, and then we displayed them in all of the high schools to start the conversation of teen dating violence, because historically, teens are less prone to report sex abuse because of their, their shame and stigma, and we're using it kind of our youth-helping youth program. So we did two iterations of it, one last year, one this year, and we're looking forward to that program moving forward. So we're just trying to be more of a resource for kids, as opposed to just the big discipline area.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ugana?
Thank you. So my, my next question is, how do you determine when an incident calls for a police report? From, from the presentation, it appears that it is the judgment call of the officer, correct, if I'm wrong? How do you determine if a particular incident calls for a higher level of documentation?
Sure, so anything that is identified as a crime is going to generate a police report. Anything that has to do with an abuse generates a police report, damage to property automatically generates a police report. So there's certain, there's certain calls for service that you're always going to get a report on. If there's an assault with injury, police report. You see, we had 1,100 calls for service, and I think 240 reports, so the vast majority of the calls we get don't generate a report. If, if we respond to a traffic incident, and someone says, I want that doc, and they insist that this documented, that could generate a police report. A police report could be anything from several pages to three lines, it doesn't need to be a ton of information, depending on what the call is. So, in some cases, there is some judgment to it, but we, as you see, we generally don't write a lot of reports in relation to the number of calls we go to. And that's also common in, on the patrol side as well, I'm sure if you looked at it, the calls for service are much, much higher than the reports taken. Sure.
Justice, and then Melissa.
I guess, I'll just, and I have, like, the questions, I have a big list, and some of them are really not even questions, that are just about BSD, BPD, because it's more about the system and the structure, and where we interconnect with some of these different things. So, I'll say that's say, I did appreciate that you discussed in the report, the 21st Century Policing Report, and, and my, again, it's probably really a school board question, is, is it actually the care and support for officers, which are a big part of that report, and that is usually the part that most playful people don't talk about. So at some point, I'd like to interface with you about that particular aspect, but I will get sort of all of my thoughts formulated, and I will get them to Gustavo, and then he will get it to Carl, and everyone here, and we'll, we'll come back. Because I want to make sure that any program, and I think this falls under programs for our district, right? That's in the building, makes sense to parents, because as a parent, I knew some things that the SRO, at that time, SRO, now YSO, was doing, but the, the feedback loop is important to me. And as a lot of things in our overall society, we can assume what's happening with a job role, based on our perceptions of how these things work. And the reality is, there's a lot of things that operate in our society, we don't know how they work. And therefore, we put people at risk, and we also expend resources on bad data. And I want to make sure we're making good decisions, that we're putting officers in a good position, that we're putting our other services in a good position also, to get the things that our kids need, so, thank you.
No, I agree, and of course, I get, I get to sit on both sides, so I hear, I was on the PTA side for many years, and I get on this side, so I'm conscious of both, and I, you know, I, I poll my fellow South Cooper Mountain families and get their pulse, so I'm kind of conscious of that, as we, we do our programs, do our reporting, and I've kind of vetted some of it with, with them first, so.
Melissa? So, one of the pieces I was thinking of, you, we have the opportunity, you'll be coming back at the end of the school year to report again, so between now and then, we have time to ask questions, and/or it sounded like an invitation to visit when you visit with, you know, like, get to know the program more, so that we can make a, learn more and continue to grow in our understanding, and as our community has asked, you know, we, we have a whole list of things that we're improving on, right? Like, that they asked us to, to work on in that report that Carl had prepared, and as we continue to work on the system and continue to improve on our side as well, as when we're calling you, and we have the board policies, too, that support the work that you do in our district, so thank you for coming tonight, and for, yeah, go ahead.
Excellent. So I appreciate you, Justin, and the rest of the staff being here, because I know that we are one part of, you know, Beaverton Police is one part, we also have Washington County, we also have Hillsborough, and we're gonna continue to get better. But again, if there's questions that need to be, that the board has more questions about, or more, we have a lot of opportunity to be able to engage, not just with BPD, but also Washington County, and also our sole police officer with Hillsborough Police, and just contact me, we can arrange ride-alongs, whatever you like, we just want information for the board, and if there's questions, that many you have, we want your answers to be provided, so Justice, literally, whatever you need, let me know, arrange with Carrie, Dr. Mead, and our, our BPD folks, so thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much for your very thoughtful questions, we appreciate that. And again, as Dr. Valdez just said, it is an honest and sincere invitation. You have questions, let's ask them. You want to see what they're doing, ride along. You know, if you got every Thursday open, guess what, we'll put you with a different YSO every Thursday. You know, it's, this is a transparent part of our work. One of the pieces, one of the comments that I opened with was transparency. We still have to do a lot of outreach to our community, to get a sense and a pulse of what's working and what's not working for them, and what their own perception is of YSOs. So we've got a lot of work to do, Carrie and I have a lot of work to do on our side of the district, to, how do we solicit that? So, be looking for that as well, so if you have ideas, don't hesitate.
The, the one piece I would end with is, within that transparency, I also want to make sure that we're protecting our students and staff and their information, so that when we are sharing that information of situations, maybe some of that data is shared internally with you, and then we get kind of a higher level. The data that you shared here is okay, but I'm just, I don't want any identifiable information for students or staff, so that we don't get traumatized.
I'm very conscious of that, and I've struggled even putting this together, to make sure that you couldn't, you couldn't identify the, the student based on what we're reporting, and it's trying to maintain the fidelity to the commitment of the report while holding on to that anonymity. That's one of the reasons why I put in DHS, because it's just, I don't want to scream child sex abuse, or keep the BHI very vague, it's just because I'm attempting to maintain that anonymity, while still hold true to our commitment.
And that's critical for our students and staff, too, so thank you for working on that, and if there's anything else we need to tweak to make sure, ensure that, we'll have that conversation, too. So thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. Thank you. Susan Greenberg? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Sorry, everybody approved. So that passes unanimously, the motion to approve the consent agenda is passed unanimously. Thank you, we will now move on to our items for action. Our first item for action is, this meeting is the approval of the board policy revisions we discussed at our last meeting. So, that's policy, BBF, Board Standards of Conduct, BDDH, Public Comments in Board Meetings, and KVA Public Records. The District General Counsel, Camilia, and Chief of Staff, Carrie Delf, are available for any questions before we vote on approval. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the revisions to the board policies?
I move to approve the board policy revisions as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments before we move on? Okay, so we'll now take a vote. Did you have a question? Okay, sorry. We'll now take a vote. All in favor of approving the proposed board provisions, please raise your hand and say yes.
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 Yes. The motion to approve the proposed revisions to the board policies passes unanimously. So thank you. We will now move to our item for future actions. Tonight, we have two items, first of which is the presentation from Northwest Regional Education Service District regarding the ESD's local service plan. ESD Superintendent Dan Goldman and Board Member Becky Timchuck are here tonight to provide information. So welcome. Welcome back, Becky.
Thank you. Oh, self-serve. All right. Got it. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Very nice to be here and, you know, have like a very special guest in tow here and very familiar to the board. So I'm going to get out of your way really quickly here and let Becky introduce what's going on here at the ESD and her role and your role in the process of our annual adoption of the local service plan. I've been in front of the board, this is my fifth year in a row, coming in front of the Beaverton Board and presenting about our LSP. And so hopefully, we can be brief, but I know we have newer new board members too, and so feel free to ask questions. I know it's a pretty dense report that we put for your pleasure in the packet. So very quickly, I'm Dan Goldman, I'm the superintendent at the ESD. It's my fifth year as the ESD superintendent. Before that, I was a district superintendent for quite some time in Hood River County School District and the Assistant Superintendent Tiger Twalton. So I've come back to Washington County after some time away. And with that, I'll turn it over to Becky, and she can introduce the first couple of slides here.
Good evening, Superintendent Alderis, Chair Perez, and board members of the Beaverton School District. My name is Becky Timchuck, and I am honored to represent the Northwest Regional Educational Service District tonight. I am one of nine members of the Northwest Regional Board of Directors, and I am extremely honored that I represent the Beaverton School District on the ESD Board. This is my first year on the board after serving eight years on the BSD Board. My experience on the BSD Board has given me a great foundation for the work I now do on the ESD Board. I thank you for entrusting in me by electing me to represent BSD on the ESD Board. Thank you. The reason I wanted to serve on the BSD Board, or on the ESD Board, was because I wanted to continue my work in public education and have a voice at the state level, which is so important for all of our students. I also believe in the collective effort that we can make in our region to make a difference for all of our students. At the Northwest Regional, we serve 20 school districts across Tillamook, Klatsup, Columbia, and Washington Counties with over 100,000 students. We are the largest and most diverse ESD in this state. Our size and diversity affords our districts a larger economy of scale for services than others in Oregon, as you can see in the breadth and depth of our programs that our districts participate in. Tonight, we are presenting the 2024-25 Local Service Plan for your approval. By Oregon statute, all ESDs must develop a local service plan that is approved by the ESD Board and members of the ESD Component School District Boards. Before bringing this plan to you, Superintendent Goldman worked with Superintendent Alderis and the superintendents in the 19 other school districts, as well as their leadership teams, to design the services in this plan. These teams research and wrestle with their needs and priorities and then decide on the programs and the staffing to be offered. Again, this year, the 20 district superintendents unanimously approve the plan that is before you this evening. After the plan is approved by school districts, then school district staff start making selections about which services they will purchase and participate in for the next school year. With that, I would like to pass the baton on to Superintendent Goldman, who will have a few slides to speak to the specifics of the plan that we are asking you to approve.
All right. Well, thanks so much. As I said at the beginning, it's quite a large report. We've gone through this, it's in the same structure as it has been in years past, and I don't want to do the full monte with y'all on all the slides, because we've done it in the past. I do want to answer some questions, and I do want to just quickly talk about the resources that are within the packet on page 36, which are really about the specific supports that Beaverton is involved in with the ESD. And so the slide that's before you here just talks in very broad strokes around some of those services. So for instance, in administration, we just call it, there's a big bucket of stuff there, but we brought in over $5 million in regional and district-specific competitive grants and state contracts that are exercised here in Beaverton. And I know I looked at that number when I saw it, and I was like, holy cow, that's a lot of, that's a lot of grant writing. But, and it is. But there are some very significant, three significant bodies of work that encompass a lot of what that number is, just so you, as board members, understand what some of that is. One of them is a long-term care and treatment contract that we have with the state of Oregon, and that funds our, partially funds the services that we provide at the Levi Anderson Learning Center, which is connected to St. Mary's. And so that greatly reduces the cost of services on a per pupil basis that Beaverton and others, quite frankly, pay to have kids served in that setting. And so our comparative costs for like that program are about 30% less than a similar program in Loma County, because we are able to get that state contract to bring down the cost. So that's an example of one of the large bodies of work and resources that we bring value add into the district. That's beyond what's really in this local service plan. What the local service plan really is, is around the state school fund, and that's a different body, that's a different bucket of funds, right? Not state contract. The state school fund comes in and we break it up in a certain components, and I'll talk about that in a moment. So early learning, we do the assessments and evaluations in early learning for Beaverton and all the babies that come up into your system, into kindergarten before they obviously get there. So you can see some evaluation numbers from last year. Instruction, so our professional development team and our instructional team provide quite an array of services. Like I show this around the state, and other ESDs really don't have the kind of services we have, and it's because, as Becky pointed out, we're just very large, and we can bring a volume that most ESDs really can't. And so Beaverton specifically is involved in our early literacy work, so I was very pleased to see an MTSS triangle up there on the screen. Wow. And so like, that's a big part of like what we do, is to support districts in multi-tiered systems, especially in this body of work around early literacy, but also in things like our attendance services, which is another program that Beaverton participates directly in. So we provide attendance consultation to attendance teams at your district and bring people together for best practice learning. You also participate at a very high level, high level, like you participate a lot in our outdoor science school. So when you send kids to outdoor school, you're sending them to an ESD program. So we have six outdoor school campuses or sites, and Beaverton schools are involved in sending kids to outdoor school. So things that you don't really associate, right? Oh, they're doing outdoor school. No, you're going to the ESD. So just so you know, we're involved in things behind that. And then dual credit. You're a very high-functioning partner with us on dual credit, making sure that kids, especially kids furthest from opportunity in our systems, have access to college credit before they leave high school for basically free, I mean, almost free. And our staff help the Beaverton High School teachers coordinate with the community college staff, and we were a big player in making sure that those arrangements happen well and that students' credits are transferable and count for, you know, their high-leverage, high-meaningful credits for kids before they leave. Obviously, special education is kind of our biggest, that's really what ESDs like across the state are, that's our real primary function, oftentimes what districts think about when they think about ESDs. So a lot of our, like, we have our association staff behind us, a lot of the staff behind me are dedicated special educators, a lot in our early learning settings. So we have a Beaverton Early Learning Center, et cetera. But we also have 75 of your students are attending, like I said, Levi Anderson Learning Center, or we have a CASPAC Columbia and Pacific Academies also located here in Beaverton, and these are social-emotional learning schools that Beaverton students come and work with our expert staff in those forums. And lastly, our technology footprint in Northwest Regional is bar none the most expansive in the state. Now, Beaverton School District, because of your size, you do a lot of technology support on your own, right? Like you're just big enough, but most of our districts are not. Like only Hillsborough is also large enough to really have the technology infrastructure that you expect here in Beaverton to just happen magically every day. The plumbing, as we like to say around technology in 18 other districts, is run by Northwest Regional ESD. And so by Beaverton's participation in the ESD, the primary premise is that it's a co-op, right? And so when all the members are in the co-op, we're able to actually benefit from the volume, and kids in banks get the same level of internet connectivity, et cetera, that kids in Beaverton do. And without an ESD, that just wouldn't happen. There's no way that a kid in banks would get that kind of services that kids in Beaverton do just because of the size and the scale and the resources. So that in a nutshell, there's a lot of specifics within there, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Very quickly, and I won't do the whole shebang here, Carrie has warned me over there, keep it tight. There is an anomaly, and I talk about it every year with our relationship with the Beaverton School District, again, because of your size. This dollar bill works, this little graphic works for 18 of our 20 districts, where the state school fund comes in and we basically chop it up into three buckets. We have 10% stays at the ESD, it pays for our basic operations, so we can have roofs and lights and all that good stuff. And then with other districts, 25% is left behind for what we call the core program, and then we develop that core program together. So it's stuff that we just bring to bear. It's basically an equity fund, really, is the way that we look at it. And then 75% goes into district accounts, and districts can purchase services or you can take it in your general fund. Because of Beaverton and Hillsborough, that 25% would be quite the nickel. And so I think I was looking in Director Schofield's report there, or Chief Officer Schofield, and about $11 million is coming, so you can say 25% of $11 million would stay at the ESD. And there's not a one-to-one return on that investment for Beaverton. So a couple of moons ago, probably seven or eight years ago, there was a new arrangement with Beaverton where you get the whole enchilada flowed through to the district, but you purchase back into what we call the core for the other districts for some instructional support services. And so that's a way that Beaverton remains a basically regional player with our other districts and really helps to improve outcomes for kids beyond boundaries and zip codes. So it's a really great, it's a good system for Beaverton, because you keep most of the money and you purchase back what you want, but it's also really good for our smaller districts. And I think, I think with that, you have the report, and I'm happy to, I know we'd both be happy to take any questions.
What questions do we have? We'll start with Susan.
It's not a question, but I just want to thank both of you for, Becky, for continuing on with your board service at ESD, and Dr. Goldman for being a part of ESD for six years now, so I appreciate it. I know you do a lot of good work, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I had one question around the early literacy. I know that this, at state level, there were some impacts to the ESDs with some of the early learning pieces. Can you maybe mention a little bit about that?
Yeah, so just for clarification, you mean early learning, like pre-K funding?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because early literacy is...
Sorry.
Yeah. So, yeah, so it's kind of like, and we're working on this pretty hard, doing a lot of work on the legislative level right now to try to ameliorate some of the impacts of this. But in the state budget last year, there was really one education program in the entire enterprise that got cut, and that is early intervention, early childhood special education. So really, services to disabled babies is the one thing that we caught in the entire state budget for education. There is, there are some reasons for why that occurred. The short answer is that it's an enrollment-based program. And so when student enrollment goes down, right, in these programs, the funding goes down as well. And the way that the state calculates enrollment is they do a two-year lookback, a two-year rolling average lookback from when they're going into the session. So as they were going into the last session, they looked back the previous two years and, you know, drumroll, two years of COVID, and we're talking about babies here who have been isolated, have not been out into the world. Oftentimes, parents don't see that their kids aren't developing like others around them. So a miracle here that kids did not get identified for services. And so the enrollment was historically low in the program. And we fought, it's traumatic, we fought very hard to point that out and to provide data, but because of the session last year, if you remember, there was a walkout, there was very little, when things came back together, there was very little time, things were fast-tracked, and it was really difficult to cut through the chat, you know, to get our voices heard through that chatter. We did get a commitment from Ways and Means Leadership that if the enrollment was trending up, that we would see increases to the budget. We are projecting a 10% enrollment increase from what we had. So just imagine here in Beaverton, if 10% more kids showed up than you had planned for, your class size would be through the roof, you would know how to serve, you know, it would be like that, and that's what we're experiencing at the ESD. So our staff have very, very high case loads. We don't have the resources to actually ameliorate that predicament. We did get a commitment, and now it is making its way through the legislature, it's in the omnibus bill, that we'll get a $22 million statewide increase, but that's basically projected on what they would calculate as a 5% enrollment increase. So we are still over $25 million short statewide in the program. So we're millions of dollars for us. That's a three to four million dollar reduction in our programs for next year in early learning. So it's putting a lot of pressure on our organization around things like workload, compensation, et cetera. What it meant for Beav, this is a really long answer for what you asked, but I think there's really good context, because honestly, you as school board members are an arm, you're an arm of the legislature, like in our state law, and so you should have a voice here. And this is a, this is a serious problem in the state budget that needs fixing, so I invite you to work with our friend here, Becky, you know, she can get some things done. So, but for Beaverton, what that meant is we had been in very direct partnership with Beaverton, Tiger, Hillsborough, and a number of other districts in providing direct resources to your pre-Ks so that we can have spots for kids with disabilities to be included in those settings and actually get more than short intervention services, so they can have a full day, be with typical peers or full program, right? Those resources, we had to cut. So all the districts' preschool partnership funds had to get reduced, because honestly, it meant that we would, otherwise, we would have to cut our staff millions and millions of dollars down. And in the state law, like in this contract, we are required to provide the intervention services, not required to provide resources to districts to expand the day. And so we had our hands tied. So that is where we are right now. We're in a, still in deficit position. We're going to hopefully stem some bleeding in this legislative session. I doubt we will get more than the $22 million this session. We've been told it's kind of a nonstarter. We're working hard to keep at that. I do think there will be some other opportunities after the session closes in what's called the emergency board process at the legislature to get some emergency funding, but, you know, that's, all bets are off there.
Thank you for sharing that. I just wanted to kind of make sure that... I just wanted to, um, kind of make sure that we were on the same page and had heard some of that information because I know it's impactful to our, um, our students, our community and our staff as well. So, um, when, and then Susan?
Ask about the Ways and Means Committee because I think they've changed leadership. And how does that impact your, um, going to them and asking for them to fund you? Do they understand?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, and Becky, do you want to say?
I, they, they do understand and we have had, um, Representative McLean, who is from Hillsborough is, and we have Courtney Neuron, who is the education chair. Um, the ESD has had, we had two legislators, we had, uh, Representative Reynolds, as well as Representative Neuron out at the Beaverton Early Childhood, and we took them around for a couple of hours. So they could see firsthand the student we heard from parents. Um, we, last week, many of you were able to join us when we had, um, the Washington County Legislative Summit, and we had many legislators there that got to hear that deficit, that these students, even though they may not be in our K-12 funding, they're all going to come to our districts. And so the early intervention, the way we can best support those students that have the most vulnerable needs, um, that, that is very much needed. And so the legislators heard that. We're also meeting with Representative McLean this week. Um, so they need to hear from all of us that this is so important, um, to our most vulnerable students in, in our area, that they get these, um, early interventions. So they are hearing us, but as we say, they need a printing press to print more money for all the needs of all, you know, the different things that are going on in our, in our state. So, um, they're trying to prioritize that.
So thank you for, for coming and I just, um, and for sharing that. I know we'll, um, follow up and, um, yeah, I know we're at time, but, and we're a little bit outside the topic, but it's also connected because it's, our, our students are being served by the ESD and that's something that's impactful. So thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to thank Superintendent Goldman and Director Tim Chuk for all the work that you do for all the districts, because I think that's one of the things, we are the largest ESD in a state and the most diverse, as you stated. So thank you for your commitment. So thank you.
And I will tell you, it feels very different being on this side of the table.
Thank you. And, um, we're gonna vote on the approval, um, at our next meeting on February 20th, um, 2024. So that was our final topic and the, um, and the last thing on the agenda is comments and committee reports. Oh, did I skip one? Oh yeah, the policies. Oh yeah. Well, welcome. Our last item for future action is proposed revisions to the board policies. So with Camilia and Carrie, um, presenting.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Valderas, we have three policies for your consideration this evening. I'll briefly go through them and leave some time for questions. Uh, the first policy revision we're proposing is to Board Policy CB, uh, the superintendent policy. Um, this, these changes reflect a change to Oregon state law around, um, basically prohibiting districts from taking employment action against superintendents who are following the law. Um, and so that language has been, uh, updated there. Um, we are also proposing a revision to Board Policy CPA, that is layoff and recall for administrators. These are really minor changes to get it in line with our, uh, model policy from OSBA. Um, and then the last one is, uh, Policy LBE, Public Charter Schools. Um, and again, we are, um, continually on this process of trying to update our policies to align with the model policies. So the changes that you see in there are largely to get that to line up. And, uh, so yeah, if you have any questions, we are here to answer them.
I don't see any questions. Um, I just, I had one on, um, see, uh, layoff and recall for administrators is the, the red was, um, changes to OSBA policy, is that right?
Correct. The, the model policy from OSBA didn't contain that language. And, and there have been changes in state law around, uh, definitions around merit and competence. And so that is partially, I think, behind the removal of that language.
Okay. That was just my question, wondering. Thank you. No, okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Um, so I think that's what I was saying, then we'll take a vote in February 20th, 2024, um, on approval of those. So that, that was our final topic. And the last thing on the agenda is comments and committee reports from board members. Who would like to go first? Anybody? Okay. Ugana, then, um, Tammy, Sunita and then Melissa. I don't know if you.
Yeah, so I attended, um, the BF meeting two weeks ago. It was not, uh, the most ideal given the encirclement weather, so we had to meet over Zoom, but we ended up having a very, um, productive meeting. It was short, but it was quite productive and, uh, it's still incredible to me to see how much, um, BF does to support programs in our schools. And, um, I look forward to continuing to, uh, represent the board at, uh, at this meeting. So I look forward to our next meeting when we will be able to spend more time and, um, have more productive conversations. But I just wanted to point it out that we're able to meet, it was short, but we did it over Zoom. Thank you.
Um, and you can pass, but Justice, did you have something?
Uh, I just wanted to, one, uh, did thankfully, I mean, after the storms, we get to visit a few schools this week and, uh, we were going long on the, uh, the comments around the behavioral health piece. And I didn't have a complete stop, but I wanted to say it was a really good opportunity to see what some of those roles look like in the eyes of the different administrators. So I would encourage everyone to take the opportunity to visit when you can and thank you, um, uh, well, I don't know if she's here still, um, but Heather, on one visit and Gustavo, the most recent one, uh, for attending with me. Um, I have one other thought, uh, that, uh, does, you know, we are approaching a long session, a short session in our state, and so there will be lots of communication around funding because that's primary what it's about. Um, and just as a community members who are also elected officials to, you know, you can wear both hats. You can also let your legislators know and I encourage our community to communicate, same way you communicate with us, send comments, please also communicate, um, across our systems, um, to make sure our ideas and the things that we need are elevated, uh, and, and we can respond to them. So thank you.
Um, Tammy?
Thank you. I have two quick things. Um, one, and I think this may be the third time I've, um, mentioned it, but I have concerns about, um, bringing the, the high dosage tutors in that are not covered under our collective bargaining agreement with either of the unions. I understand the urgency, uh, the emergency of the situation that we need to catch our kids up, but I would like to, um, look at ways to ensure that this is, you know, potentially a short time, um, you know, short-term situation, um, build in place, uh, a mechanism if it's going to go on longer to convert them to employees and bring them under the, um, protection of the CBA. Um, so I just, um, I, I don't feel like we're really addressing this and I hope that we can have maybe a topic of conversation at some point at a board meeting about what it looks like, what the, what the plan, at least I can hear what the plan is. I just now, I think, learned what the name of this, um, this private company that's coming in, I guess it's a nonprofit, but, um, I'd like to know a little bit more about that and what the long-term plans for it are. Um, second, um, really quick as well, um, I have, since I've been doing this work, um, asked a lot of questions about our SRO program and I have a lot of feelings about it. Um, and I would like to explore the opportunity for the board to have oversight of the program, um, to be able to write policy that, um, ensures that, you know, we're, we're protecting our kids, um, and staff. And, um, so I'm, I'm hopeful that as we're leading up into maybe the discipline talk, we can look at what would it look like? Do we, would we be interested in having maybe an ad hoc committee, look at what it might look like? And maybe, maybe you guys, you know, have been all telling me that, no, this is programmatic, you know, the board doesn't have oversight and, and, but I'd like to have that conversation as well. So if we could at some point, um, maybe just explore the idea of allowing the board to have oversight of this program that's really impactful to a lot of people in our community.
So we'll bring that to leadership and then we can get back to you on that one. Um, Sunita?
Um, I have three short things. First one, I had a chance to go to Chehalis Elementary School and it was really, really nice to visit the classrooms and see the kids being so engaged in their learning. And that was very joyful for me. Um, also I had a, uh, chance to attend the Bond Accountability Committee meeting. And, um, if anybody is interested in why we are doing seismic upgrades in our area and how it also helps the community, please watch it. It was on January 26th. Um, our bond pays, um, about $40 million we have budgeted for six middle schools to have seismic upgrades. And we have a matching Oregon grant funding, which gives about $2.5 million per school, but there's more need than the funding. So, um, that was one thing that I had a chance to lobby for too. And, uh, that's my third thing. I am in Washington DC. Thanks to OSBA Color Caucus, I got a scholarship to attend the Equity Symposium and the Advocacy Institute and had a chance to meet senators and talk to them about what Beaverton School Board federal legislative priorities were. And it was a very, very nice experience and I hope we get some of the things that we are asking for. Um, two main things was having the fully funding of IDEA, which is Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. In 1975, Congress had said that they would give 40, 40% of the cost for, uh, any disability, uh, a child with any disability. And at the current time, they're only, we are only getting about 13%. So ha- having the fully funding of this IDEA is a push that a lot of school districts are doing. Um, so that's, it, it also affects our other kids too, because the money, if we don't have enough money, then it goes from our general fund. So I hope that happens. And then the second main thing that affects us is having a stable title school funding. There might be a lot of changes next year. So, um, that is very important to us. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sunita. And thanks for representing in Washington. Um, Susan, anything? Melissa?
I know it's been said a lot, but I just want to extend a huge thank you to the staff who went above and beyond to get our schools ready for our students to return to their classrooms after that bananas weather event. Um, I know how, um, how hard it is to work on the Saturdays and Sundays while everybody else is in their jammies. Um, and our team got there to get the classrooms ready to welcome our students. So thank you. Um, and thank you to our elected officials and for Carrie for joining us at the Washington County Legislative Summit. We're really lucky in Washington County because we have legislative, um, representatives who are really collaborative and they want to hear from us. And we're looked at from around the state as kind of a model for how to collaborate together between school boards and our representatives. So that was a really great event. And then I got to attend the Melodies for McKenney Vento. And I just want to thank the students for sharing their amazing talents, um, with our community and for using the stage to give back to their community and making it stronger. And I know we had a lot of staff who also supported the event, so just thank you for that too.
Um, I just, I feel really proud because we are, and I'm, I look at Becky back there, you know, she's like, she's looking onto a, a brand new board, basically. Um, and I feel very proud of like the work that we're trying to do, not only in our district, but also statewide to really, um, and nationally with Sunita representing us, um, in Washington, to really, um, look at our state funding and how we can stabilize that in a way that allows us to really, um, serve all students and, um, and support our staff. As there's different pushes and pulls on that funding, um, hard decisions, um, have to be made and, um, our students need to be served and our staff needs the PD and the, all the, you know, health insurance, all these different pieces. So, um, we'll continue as a board to work, uh, statewide and nationally to, um, ensure that state funding. I think it's critical for our work. Um, I also wanted to say that, um, one change that we've done this year is that we're trying to get to all schools. So we have a calendar where all board members are invited depending, we all work, we all have, you know, we have kids, we have work, we have other projects that we support in our communities, but many of us are taking the time, as, we're all taking the time when possible to serve either on a, like, um, BEF or BE, you know, the Bond Accountability Committee. And we're trying to get out to our staff. We've heard from our staff that they want us out in buildings and seeing our special ed rooms, seeing what the YSOs are doing in our building, seeing what happens in a general math class, when it goes well and when it goes bumpy. And, um, it's been beautiful to be at so many different schools and seeing our children learning and even the bumpy parts, such as part of the day, you know? But, um, the passion that we see out in the schools, um, and the care for our kids. Um, this morning I did get to go out to West TV and see the impact of the trees and the water damage, um, and seeing how our staff has pulled together, not only our, um, um, the maintenance team, um, but also we're working in, it's just incredible organization, um, that seems sometimes slow, but really we're trying to do, um, bring our buildings to the safety codes that are, are needed, um, looking, just getting the arborist organized to cut down all these trees and all these different things that need to happen. And so thank you to our staff that's organizing all that behind the scenes. Thank you to our staff, um, that's creating those, moving their classroom from one room to the other to create a new space for our children so that their learning continues. And we were able to open our schools, um, after all that, um, for our kids. And, um, so I know that families and kids were impacted in their homes as well as our staff. So thank you to everybody for all the work. And with that, um, any more closing comments from you, Dr. Valderas?
I just want to thank the board again. It's been a long time seeing you, so I look forward to getting to have more frequent meetings now that we're back at it after the new year.
Um, with no other comments or agenda items, the January 30th business meeting of the Beaverton School Board is adjourned.